Trustee Brown.
Yeah.
Trustee Kobo Smith.
President.
Trustee Dr. Lincoln.
Here.
Vice President Rochen.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here, and I can go ahead and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hannah McFad? As everyone else today, we have our governance workshop and I think just kind of leave it there and turn it over to our really great facilitator that we have, or actually I'll turn it over to interim superintendent Dr. Wayne to share some words before we get started with the other part of the governance workshop.
Thank you, and I just want to appreciate you all for organizing this workshop. I am in, it's my ninth year as being a superintendent, but I've worked with six different boards. And I say that because every time a new member comes on the board, you act as a whole, so it's a new, new board of education. So I think it's really important for boards to prioritize having this time to talk about governance and both collectively as a whole, so that you can each individually share what it means to, for you and come together with what that looks like as a district. So for me, I'm here just as a resource to you, having been a superintendent for a while, but this is really your time with Ms. Wright Keys. And so at that, you've hired an excellent facilitator to lead the workshop and we'll turn it over to her.
All right, perfect timing, look at that. I'm sorry, multitasking, when some of the boards find out I'm in California, they're like, I'm in here, I'm working, leave me alone. Anywho, could I try to give you all my attention? I feel like I know you guys, I told the two ladies, I watch your board meetings. I do, I watch board meetings for a living, so that's just what I do, sometimes I have, I have four TVs under my house sometimes, so if I get YouTube on, I can have all these different. It's just something I do, and it helps me get to know you better, and I appreciate everyone chatting with me. This is gonna be our fun time together, I'm so glad we're not sitting up there. You know, I wanted you to have the feeling that this is not a board meeting, okay? So we are gonna be together to build our relationships with each other, that board, how we work collaboratively with each other, with a superintendent, knowing the different roles and who's on first base, who's on second base. The key thing is that both of the roles are very important. I know you're in that space of getting ready to do one of your most important things, is to hire your education expert. I always like to say it that way because when, and I know we have educators on the board, right? Who's the educator on the board? Educator, educator.
That's why you all know it.
I know, you know. I'm like, she's getting ready to eat, but, and usually it's, it's, it's a challenge in a different kind of way. When I say challenge, for educators to be on the board of education, because you have lived experiences. And so it's hard for educators to not be the one to say how to do things, because you already know. So when you're, as you're a board member, you have to back up, because the how goes here. You are the what, the big picture. What's the process in dealing with X, Y, Z? And let the superintendent tell you how, let them do that head to head. So this is the space I really enjoy being in, I work with boards for over twenty-five years, I started when I was twenty. You know, started at the state level in Michigan, then went to the national level for five years and getting ready to go into my eighth year as an independent consultant. So I really wanted to do this kind of work instead of putting on national events and training new board members, and all of that's important, but this is what I really love to do, yes.
What did you do at the state national?
I was the director of the equity department.
For what?
NSBA, National School Boards Association, MDC area, in Alexandria. So I did that for five years, and I was in charge of all the caucuses, the Black, Hispanic, Native American caucuses. Almost made my five years, because I said I would give them three to five years, that was my plan. And was into my fifth year and really wanted to do this type of work. I had a hundred and ten districts who were part of my program, so when I decided to do this type of work, I didn't have to advertise. I still don't advertise, it's word of mouth. And I always say to boards when they call me, are you sure you want me? Are you sure? Because I am your biggest cheerleader, I'll put that out there, always your biggest cheerleader. And I always want to create that space where you will allow me to say, I hear what you're saying, I'm gonna give you some tools so that you can handle it a different way. Always tell board members, and I let the superintendents know, board members can ask anything they want. Then I get over here and complete the space. Then I ask board members, why are you asking a question? You can ask anything you want as long as you can feel through, through governing. That's why, because you're the oversight, you're managers, that's the big picture. Because I travel, I'm traveling three weeks out of every month, I always sit at the window, ten thousand feet, I'm looking down. This is what we always tell board members, that ten thousand foot view, that's where you can see how everything is so neatly, all the matchbox cars. You can see if there's gonna be a collision, that's what boards do, you anticipate. Just like, oh, superintendent, I'm hearing some chatter in, in the, in the community, you might not know this, so I'm gonna come and drop this on your plane. Just so you know, because then the expectation is to address it. That's what the board, that's what it looks like in action, oversight and management. And many board members, as you know, you've been on, some of you have been on here, at least a term, right? At least a full term, and there are minimum requirements to do this at forty-four, minimum requirements. Usually eighteen years of age, popular enough to be elected, and some of those other things like being a community, but that's it. Not so for a credentialized position with superintendent, principals, and teachers. They are, that's why we say they're the experts. But board members can learn how to govern. Individually, board members like, yes, I got this, I know how to do this, and I say you probably do. Now, the challenge is how do you do it with four other people? That's where the challenge is. And I worked with boards five, seven, nine, eleven, and thirteen. You can imagine what that's like. Because I say to every superintendent, we'll give a board of thirteen, sometimes that's twenty-six people, because we all have another personality that may show up at a board meeting. So yes, so Dr. Wayne has ten people he may have to deal with at some point. We know it's like, which one is gonna show up at a board meeting? You just don't know, you know? And so, you know, that's why it's so important to work collaboratively together, and I will never, ever work with boards until, come in and tell you what you can't do. My role is always to share with you all the things that you're responsible for. And it is so much, you won't have time to do all those other things. Because when you look at how important this work is, and if you're not navigating and working great at the top, how can the fu, the district function well if the, if the leaders of the, of the district, they're not working collaboratively together? Speaking with one voice. And it's not being robotic, it's how do we get to that one voice? See, a lot of people in the community don't realize that even though you may have a five oh vote, it could have been a three two until you had discussion. Until you get more information, staff will present more, then you have those aha moments. There's someone on your team who is an expert, and if someone is an expert in a subject matter, if I was a board member, I would talk less. Because I'm like, I don't have lived experience, all I can do is read about it. So let me yield to my colleague, and that's the beauty of the community selecting each of you. Different lived experiences, different education background, and you're bringing all that to the table. But the key thing is you're putting it on the table, all your experiences, lived experiences, your education background, and we put it on the table without claiming on the table. I visually think about that. When I claim on the table with something, I don't want to hear anything else my colleagues have to say, because I know it's right. But if I put on the table and leave it, I'm gonna allow Antonio to say what he needs to say about that topic. And it is not personal. And we always say, oh, is this business not personal? Hmm, as many board meetings that I watch, I'm like, you're taking it personal. I could take, I, I talked to the, to you guys on the screen too, that's what I do, you're taking it personal. So it's harder to model that, that it's not personal, but that's something that you can learn how to do, absolutely. So we're gonna have a great time together, this is one of three series that you guys have committed to doing. So the first one is really shoring up the foundation, I always think about it as scaffolding. Or building a, a home, and I think, I was reminded in California, you guys don't have a lot of basements here. You have basements, okay, I'm from Michigan, we have basements, okay? So we just think about when you, they dig up the dirt, they pour the cement and make a basement first. It is not that exciting to watch seeing that dry. But if you don't shore up that foundation first and you build this beautiful home, it'll be torn down when the board changes, when the superintendent changes. That's why this time together, we are going to be shoring up the foundation. We may feel some bumps and bruises and all that, that's okay, we're all family, that, that's okay. Because we're here for the right reason, I think that's something that you all can agree upon, that you are here truly for the good of, how many kids are in this district? A lot of children, children that you have to pay attention to, and they are anticipating that these adults are gonna make the right decisions for them. And they truly are your constituents, they just can't vote yet. I do know, those seniors, don't tick them off, okay? Because I worked with a board in California where the seniors return at eighteen at election, and they voted for board members on. They told them they were gonna do it, and they did it. The board is in great shape now, you know, not just because they worked with me, but, but because the kids were really serious about the behaviors of the board. They weren't making the right decisions for them, they were, they're, you're not modeling what you're telling us to do. So students have power too, and so they, they trust you, so that's why I said they're truly your constituents, okay? And so feel free to, if you haven't eaten, we're gonna chat and chew, it is okay. I'm going to go through this, what today will look like, you know, you took the communication style, which is really just gonna be helping us see who's on the team. And your communication style result is not a personality, it's nothing about your personality. It's just what is my preferred way to communicate with each other? And you will want to always kind of think about that when, not only when things are going great, but there will be times, it's not if, it's when. There will be things that are, decisions that you have to make that you are all not in agreement with. And we have to watch our, our tone with each other. It was really challenging during COVID where, of course, we were all on, you know, remote. And I used to have to text some board members and play, okay, why are you breathing so hard in the mic when this person is talking? So just our body language, we have to remember that, I'm like, now everyone's looking at you. You know, and even when you're sitting up there, it's still the body language, are you leaning in when someone's talking to each other? I was just mentioning to Maya that the way your dais is set up is not the most conducive way. Nine times out of ten, they're not set up that way, you know they're curved. So I heard that maybe that's gonna change, if you have an opportunity to renovate, maybe. Because your meeting is your meeting in the public, it's not the public. But if you are aligned like this, you are talking straight out to the community. And that's why some community people take over board, is one of many reasons. Because you're talking right at me, and then they don't understand when it is their three minute time, that why aren't you answering me? Because you're staring at me, how rude is that? But it's something as simple as the setup on the dais.
And not only, you can't see each other.
There you go, thank you for bringing that up. Yes.
You know, when you see each other, then you know where they're sitting at or where they're thinking, and how then you need how to act.
Yes, and I, thank you Mary for bringing that up. Because then you can see, if your colleague is pondering on something or struggling with something, then you can kind of take a pause and say, okay, what, is there's anything else we can help you with, to help you, you know, understand this better, or do you need additional information? But if you're not looking at each other, you don't have that camaraderie with each other, you're not interacting. So it looks like it's just, where, where everyone talks directly, straight, and we're not talking to each other. Even when the superintendent is at that dais with you, you're talking to each other. But it is the way that the board, the community is learning about the board's business. Because every time you get up there, that's what it is, you're handling the business of the district. Some boards will kind of think that it becomes their social hour or something, or, or just, uh, 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 you know, like a social, like a social club. Sometimes like, what are you doing? You can't just talk about anything, you have to talk about what's on the agenda. If that's what you posted, that's what you talk about. So you can't deviate from that, number one, that's open meetings law, and you have to follow the laws of the land, you know? But it can get so easily confused about that or just out of focus on what our work is supposed to be, because we get so caught up in the stuff that's going on. And then mostly the exciting things that are happening usually happen with administrators, you know? What's going on in that building, what's going on with that principal, what's going on with that teacher? And some board members really like to be more engaged at that level. You still will be informed, but that's really not, you don't hire any teachers, you don't hire principals. But when superintendents, of course, put forth a recommendation, you have to trust that they've done their due diligence based upon the policies that the board has put in place. And you have to trust that that happened, because if it's not followed, it will come back around, and you are going to find out, and then that's a different kind of conversation that you have. So we're gonna cover a lot of the foundational things. It will always be, whatever I share with you will be through the lens of governing, that's the only way I know how to talk to board members. Because this is the role that you volunteered for, no one made you run, you know, I talked to each of you, no one, I was forced to get down there and be able. So you have to want to do this, you know, and you have to have a passion for it, because it's not all the pay you get for this job, right? I know it is not paying any mortgages or anything like that at all. Sometimes it's just a dust to put gas in your car, who, who knows? Some boards don't get much, some boards don't get anything, and some boards, you know, get a lot. But it's still work you have to do. We will always talk about the, what the key work of board is, boards are really thinking about, and this will help you when you're getting, you're in this process of going through your soup search process. You've already identified what characteristics you want and things of that nature, getting through this, but then once you make a decision, now the work starts. Because now the board has to make sure your vision, your policy, all of that, the curriculum, that we are staying focused on the work that we expect that superintendent to do, because eventually you evaluate them, all of that is connected. But sometimes boards lose their way in this space and forget that when it comes around time to evaluate a superintendent, you haven't been taking, take, make sure you have those benchmarks in between every couple of months. You don't wait a whole year to say, oh, by the way, you didn't do this, well, we should have had that conversation six months ago. And any superintendent will be able to say, I know this is the goal, but I gotta wave the flag, we're not gonna meet that goal, and this is why. And that's okay, that's that two-way conversation, because we know a lot of things happen. What is it, it could be something that, we don't have anyone in that position anymore, the capacity. But it's still, but the board's not gonna say, okay, we'll take that out, no, it's just that, okay, tell us what's your plan? Eventually, it could be, you know, it may not happen this school year, but by the next, whatever that is, but that's that communication that is so important. The key thing I had, four, only four of you took the assessment, I don't know which four, because it was anonymous, but it, it gives, it's still a good view of where this board is. Yeah, that's all I'll say about it, you have to see the results, it's, it's, it's telling, it's very telling. Nothing that I haven't seen before, but at least it's somewhere to start. And it's really a good time now for you to know where this team is, and saying that there's some work that we need to do, there's some areas where growth is needed, and, and there's some glowing areas, okay? So, I always like to start out with what kind of agreements that we will have. This is, even though, yes, it's a public meeting, it's open, but I want everyone to, you know, really stay engaged, and we're gonna listen to each other. I, it's my responsibility to just navigate through that, everyone has a right to be here, everyone can have a space to speak their truth. And that's what I wanted to be, not just say what you think your colleagues, or that I would want you to say, speak your truth, because that's the only way the team will learn how to grow together. There is no judgment on anyone, everyone, like I said, everyone has a right to be here, so there is a not, no judgment zone. We will experience some discomfort, and it could be just a matter of perhaps some practices that we have been doing, they don't work. And it will be, I will be the one to tell you, I hear you, but that's not conducive to a team. But again, I was definitely demonstrating that it's not personal, because this is what I enjoy doing, working with boards. But sometimes systems don't work, and we have to change systems. So when we're not focusing on people, you know, focus on systems, we have to admit that something that we did ten years ago, maybe it was good ten years ago. But it does not work today, and because we're not faulting or shaming or blaming anybody, we want to focus on the system is no longer supporting what we're trying to do. So as a governing team, that's what your job is, to oversee that, to evaluate, like, hmm, that was a good idea? But that don't, no longer works well for us, okay? And then we will expect and accept non-closure, there will be a lot of unknowns, you know, that we'll just be working on getting to, and that, that's okay. We won't be able to solve all the world's problems, not tonight. Okay, everybody good? And it's very informative, when you want to speak, just, we, we're gonna talk through this, because this is your space, I really appreciate you carving out time for your own professional learning, because it, it is very, very important. So this is what I want to make sure we get, again, you know, we're gonna reflect on the systems and structures. And then I will share with you best practices that you can immediately do. So it's not that, oh, we gotta get that on the agenda to approve, and because this is not a board meeting, we're not making any decisions, we're not, there's no actions. It's just we will talk about perhaps doing some things in a different way, okay?
That's not fair.
Sure.
Are we being tamed, is this law?
Yes, 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 we are. Understand the clear roles, and again, individually, board members like, well, I know what my role is, I, okay? But it's collectively that's important, how do we do this collectively? Do we always diminish, we always model being collaborative with each other, not just saying we're in agreement, because it's okay if you don't agree. You still have two things that no one can take from you, your voice and your vote. And you truly vote your own conscience, based upon the information that you have, if you've done your due diligence, you've read your information. Everyone's provided you all the information that is there, you vote the best way that's best for kids here. It's not a best, it's not, well, I don't, I feel, it goes against my personal value. Now, this is an area that can be challenging for some boards, my personal value. Now, this is where you have to decide, when you took an oath of office, you didn't take an oath of office because of your personal values, we do know that. So there may be some laws that you just don't agree with, but you took an oath to do, it's almost like the, the medical field, do no harm. So you are to do no harm to children, if the law says that you have to do X, Y, Z in a school setting, education landscape, that's what you have to do. But if we allow our own personal beliefs and convictions to interfere, that's where our board members have to really step back and do some reflecting. And if that becomes a major problem, then you would have to make some decisions. Because, you know, this is the landscape of education, and especially what's going on today, we may not agree with ninety-nine point nine 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 percent, but it's happening unfortunately. We're going to talk about expectations that create board norms, now, do you have board norms? Yes or no, or maybe, kind of, sort of?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Where are they?
That, in the ways that we interact with each other, do, now, do we have those explicitly stated, that's a different question.
Yes, yeah, well, you don't have board norms, if it's not written, because who's gonna, if I'm sitting there, why are you telling me, where is it written? And that's why you have to write everything down. So I did some of the work for you, I create, I gave you some really good practice, is the best practices on board norms. And all I want to have you do is you're gonna select which ones work with this team, because then you just customize it for what works for you. And then you could add more to it, and that's something we'll build on, so I'll have, you'll have some homework to do between now and the next time I see you, because I will constantly, remember I'm scaffolding, I'm building up to something. So it's not just a one-time ascent and get, it's something that we will build upon. But then you will be able to talk about expectations that you have of each other. This is where it can get a little uncomfortable or a little sensitive, and we have to practice not taking things personal. Because what I expect of the board president is not what I expect of Antonio. It's that seat, it's that position, whoever think, and it will help individuals who think they want to do that job. That there is another level of, of expertise and expectation on being the board president. And some boards, I think I experienced it more in California, where a lot of the boards here allow everyone to get a chance. Personally, this is Deborah speaking, I don't think that's a good idea, but, because not everyone is equipped to do it. And a lot of the boards I work with, they even say that, like, I don't want to be a board president, but you're all leaders, you don't have to be the board president. Some individuals just have that extra level, and it can be, and can be a good person in that position to rally people together. Number one, you have to have, be able to build relationships, you have to interact with everybody, have your finger on the pulse of everyone's needs. So of course, someone who has challenges interacting with colleagues will have a difficult time being a board president. So those are just the realities, you know, again, it's, that's not personal, it's just the reality. Because at the end of the day, you want to do what's best. Because at the end of the day, you wanna do what's best for the district, it is not best, it's not about what's best for you as an individual. I, I value you, I admire each of you, I will always say it is not about you, I will always say that consistently. So whatever decision you make, isn't truly about the children. And sometime, like if I looked at your, um, agenda, as a layperson coming in, outsider coming in, if I looked at your board agenda, would it tell me that you are focused on student achievement, student outcomes? What would be on there to tell me that? What do you think? Would it be, is it, would your, would your agenda tell me that this district is focused, well, district, and I would say board, because it's the board's agenda? That kinda makes you think about it. Cause what are you supposed to be talking about at your board meetings?
Student, student learning.
Mm, that's the business we're in. So if that's not showing up, that's a problem.
Are there really boards that don't, like, cause I mean, we've talked only, I think, about students.
Well, what's on your agenda, how would I know that, that's what I'm asking, how would I know, what, tell me what's the line item on?
Presentations of, of activities or programs that we're having to increase our students' learning.
Pro, you said programs, say it again?
What's going on in our classroom, so what we picked up to do for math, or what we've done for.
And that's a staff person giving a presentation, okay? Right, go ahead, go ahead, what were you thinking?
No, I'm just interested, cause like, I was surprised that Jag said no, that she didn't, and I really do feel that, that, um, we've talked mostly about like student outcomes, like we just had the big LCAP um, presentation, and we talked about that, and then I know that there's still some work on that. But I, I feel like every board meeting we've talked, at some terms, um, like I know we have the youth life presentation, and, um, and like other things, like we've had, um, who else could we be, some of the after-school programs.
Keep, keep talking, I'm listening.
So, yeah, I can't, like, so I'm just like kinda wondering, like, what, what do other boards talk about if they're not talking about the kids?
And we know the LCAP, but that's something that you guys require by law. So take that part, but you have to talk about it.
Okay, okay.
And I'm getting ready to get some evidence, cause I just asked me to pull up an agenda, I wanna look at your agenda.
Yeah.
But you be, you should be able to tell me, what's on your agenda that would tell someone who doesn't, who's not used to come to your board, that you are a student-focused district? Go ahead, Jen.
Anybody else who wants to speak first?
Oh, you're still good.
Yep, thank you for putting that in.
Um, I think that we are doing much better this year in terms of the amount of conversations we're having around students, um, with the different presentations that we're having. But I think to be effective, we would be more strategic, so we would have those goals, and then we would have the follow-up, um, kind of conversations with staff in the board meetings, and evidence of how we're moving towards that. So right now, it's just, here's a presentation on the reading program, here's a presentation on this, but we don't have a goal to say, okay, so we know we have a reading program, but what was the data in the beginning of the year for how students were doing? What is the benchmark or the, the air, you know, like every quarter or every, however long we decide, like, where are students now in it, we just talk about what we have, like the program, but we don't actually talk about the growth that students have made.
And that's the key, that's the difference there, go ahead, jump in.
Yeah, and just, um, when you ask like what other districts do, I mean, I, I, I agree, I think you're starting, you're having on the agenda um, items related to teaching and learning, but in terms of engaging in governance around student outcomes, um, what Dr. Jag is speaking about hasn't quite happened yet, and what, you know, so just some examples of what it looks like is, is, you know, having agenda items that are, are, you know, focused on, on, it will, you, so you're all gonna work on some goals, so focus on the goals, looking at the progress for the goals, and then more of a conversation among the board in that oversight accountability role of asking questions of staff and talking to each other about what needs to happen to reach that goal, right? So, both in Hayward and San Francisco, we, we ended up, for, we'd have some, some board meetings or more workshops like this, where you sit around the table on the conversations among the board, rather than just as you described, a presentation, here's some activities we're doing, a few questions of staff, and then, um, and then, uh, uh, you know, then you move on, so, so that's, that's what I.
And I definitely agree that, I think we're, we're not quite there yet, but I think, you know, what keeps us from getting there is these structural things that we're working on, and they today are like, goals, we, we need to have a permanent superintendent, we need to have all these other pieces in place to really have really effective conversations that are focused on students, because I think we're all trying to have those conversations, but I think as we've seen, uh, maybe partly this year, definitely like in previous times, like, these conversations kinda like just disappear into the ether if we don't have these structures in place.
And thank you for, and I just nudge you, I will always be poking the bear, that's what you're gonna learn from me. Because you guys know, and you know it, I just need you to state it, because that is, that's exactly what's happening, and I just peeked at it, and I'm like, mm, mm. It's a lot of, what are they, per- per- pretty functional-y type things, just, we have to do this, we have to do this. Because if you don't have goals, which is the number one thing, and when you're in the process of hiring a superintendent, that's what any superintendent is gonna say, where, where are your goals, board? Because I know how to be a superintendent now. I don't need the board telling me how to be a superintendent. What I need is that the board has very clear expectations of me through these goals. And that's what you're, you're saying you're working at, and you're gonna get there, absolutely, all of this is what will be happening. But that's why you have to admit some things of where you are. And the key thing is when you have, um, presentations on a reading program. It, my question would be, what kind, what kind of questions are you asking the staff? Because you can, if you are not clear, of letting the superintendent know what you expect in the presentation, you gonna get everything in the kitchen sink. Because they're going, they, the staff, they're gonna tell you everything that's going on, cause that's the world they live in. The board doesn't need to know everything. The board needs to know, when you think about even data, three things that all the board should look at data, where were we? Where are we now, and where are we trying to get to? Everything you look at, data is great, but data can keep you quiet too. Let's give them something, I said, it's happening here. But administrators know how to give the board data, oh, they want data, we gonna give them data. But if the board doesn't say, okay, this, I don't even know if we should celebrate this, cause I don't even know where we were last year. Or if we are celebrating, wait a minute, why are we celebrating and we only moved zero point zero one one? What are we celebrating for? I wanna know what's the, what is the plan to get us from here to where we need to be. So when everything that the board is looking at, that's the, that's the, the, uh, view you should have. We celebrate, but you need to know, are we doing enough to be celebrating? And the board needs to know, especially if you're making decisions about spending a lot of money, paying for programs, how do you know that they're working if you don't come back? To say, okay, about, I don't know, should we wait a whole school year, or maybe mid-year, just ask it to you, how's it working? And some may say, well, you know, since you guys never asked our opinion, we're not even using that, I'm not saying that, but that does happen. Because no one asks the experts who are in the room. The board just thought this is great, cause everybody's using it, we should do it, but then you're not monitoring, because that, again, once you make the decision, that's not the end. Then you have to have some type of rubric on like, how are we gonna monitor, how do we know if we're successful? So those are all things of how boards of education should be thinking, and everything that's before you. So that when staff is coming in front of you, they know what the board needs to know. And it's usually high-level, is what the board needs to know. And if there is a problem with whatever they're doing, as long as the board doesn't make the staff feel that it's a punitive thing, because we didn't make, we didn't get to where we were. But that's in how the board creates the culture, that, that starts at the top. No staff should feel so afraid, which most staff is afraid to report, because you guys are the power players. So they're not, they really don't, they're, they're a little nervous presenting in front of the board, but it's all in how you make them feel. Do they walk away feeling that the board values their expertise? Even though I didn't know all the answers, even if you ask them a question and they don't know, it's okay for a board member to say, you don't have to answer that right now, but, you know, can you give us this and come back to us? That's such a, that lowers the anxiety for most individuals who are presenting. So again, a lot of this starts with the board, you have to be clear on what is it that you want the superintendent's staff to present, the board has to know that. And you connect, and then what are you connecting it to? Your goals. I know you have LCAP, now remind me, do you guys have a strategic plan? Okay, you probably, a lot, I know a lot of, um, districts in California don't. The majority, all the other forty-nine states do, I'm just saying, and I say this to everybody, it's California, and it's everybody else, in a good way. Most states do have a strategic plan, districts do. Because that's where on the agenda, just say if you have five pillars in your strategic plan. One of the pillars will be listed, and every discussion will be attached to that. Whatever staff is, want to say they wanna share, how do they connect it to that, to the strategic plan? Superintendent is reporting, now, how's it going, are we meeting the benchmarks of the strategic plan? Do you need anything? Do you have capacity issues, that, that's the kinda conversation of governing body, and that's how you stay focused, it is the strategic plan. And any new superintendent coming in is going to, and say, yeah, we have the LCAP, but that's compliance. Okay, so I just put that over there. You have to, what are the goals for this district? You have to look at your data, who are the, uh, children who are at the bottom, who we are not serving well? So that should be your goal in that area, is the school climate and safety, is there an area there, is always curriculum. You know, and soon achievement, of course, is, is very broad. And then budget runs through every one of those. You can't say you're gonna do all this and the board does not make the budget line item supported. But you want this to happen, but we don't have the money to do it, so, pretty soon, staff's like, okay, board, what do you want? You're saying that this is important, but there's no money to support it, and we know what that's like, you know, unmanned, and you know, mandated things that's unfunded, we know what that's like when it comes to um, the state or the fed, federal government, and we don't wanna do that to our own staff, go ahead.
I will say that, um, last school year, we had, um, an equity board committee, ad hoc committee, and Antonio and I were the two board members on the committee. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not using very formal terms, I know we're on TV, but.
This is, this is our, our study, our planning, our study session, it's not board meeting, but we're good.
And trustee D and, um, Olga were, um, uh, families on the team, you know, like a, a parent and grandparent and community member, so that was awesome. We, the, the committee came up with goals, but it's more like a strategic plan, if you really look at it, it's like very much like all those areas you talked about throughout the system. So I feel like we have a start to have a conversation.
Yes, yeah.
Because that team was, most of us, Miss Rochelle wasn't able to join us, but we were, and it was community, it was staff, it was based on the equity audits, and then when McPherson and Jacobson did our, um, the, you know, as they're doing the superintendent search for the surveys and the focus groups, I'm like, this is all aligning. Like, there's nothing that's like out of the ordinary in terms of our culture and system, right, like, it's all aligning, and so I feel like we have good places to start.
Yeah.
We just need to put it all together and figure out where do we wanna go, and what is it based on, right?
And, and that's good, I, I looked at that audit report, and I'm listening to when, uh, at your board meetings, when the, um, search team is reporting out in the surveys and things of that nature. So the key thing is whenever you, your superintendent comes in, yes, you have pockets of all this being done. Because a strategic plan is to do just what you guys already did, teachers, student voice, the, the commu- community, board members, you have all of these individuals contributing. So it will, it won't be like, oh, we're starting from scratch, we have no information, yeah, you have a lot of information, you just have to pull it together. And then you prioritize, so there might end up being ten things, well, you really don't want ten goals, that's too many, five too many, really. You wanna do something that's manageable, that is broad enough, that we can keep this district moving. And that it's not, and it's sustainable too, and it's that, it's not just good for one or two years, a strategic plan is a three to five-year plan. So that's why you wanna think broadly, so yes, the good thing is, and don't forget that you have these pockets, all this data is sitting there waiting for the plan to pull a strategic plan together, and then you remind the community, hey, remember when you participated in this? This is why we're, the, the goal is gonna focus on this area, because this is what you told us was important. So you just have to remind people that they participated. And you still go through when you, when it's decided to have a strategic plan, they will pull all this together and let people just revisit it again. But a lot of the work is already done, which you're in a good place for that. And yes, having that LCAP, there are things in there that would, of course, support the, the, um, strategic plan. But the strategic plan is digestible. How many of you have read your whole LCAP? How many pages is it? Yeah. Now, do you think community people are gonna read that? Not at all, unless you have a executive summary or, but a strategic plan is very digestible for the community to understand what this board, why you are up there making certain decisions, because it's aligned with the strategic plan, we're just not making things up. Everything we do is aligned to our plan, so your agendas, I'll go back to your agenda, it would have something about this, whatever the topic is, that will be the line item. So that when you're discussing it, the community and staff knows that they're not going way off, they are staying focused on the, the roadmap, your blueprint, which is your strategic plan. And that's, that's consistent with the board, so when the board stays focused on that, you don't have time to worry about all these other, just, someone called you and told you that they had issue, and, or they come to your board meeting and share a concern they have, it's a valid concern. Always remember that just because it comes to the board table in here, does not mean it's a board issue. Cause nine out of ten is administrative, it goes right over here. Because if they had a problem with you personally, they're gonna tell you. But if it's a, it's a situation, an incident that happened, or a principal or teacher, that's administrative, there's nothing the board can do about it. But it's all, all in how you're educating them, reminding them of protocol, that's all it is. So when I'm sharing and having these type of conversations with you, it's just to, like you said, this is what governance looks like in action, this is all the moving parts. Our agenda, it is our agenda, the superintendent and staff contribute to the board's agenda. I am watching many board meetings where I just want to tell the board, man, why are you there? Cause you are sitting there saying nothing, and the superintendent is running the meeting. Which I don't blame him, I guess the superintendent, well, if you guys aren't gonna do it, I have to do this, and that's what will happen. But it is the board's agenda, absolutely superintendent and staff contribute, because they know the inner workings of the district, superintendent teaches up to the board. Right, but it is your meeting, and that, again, goes back to, that's why you need to be looking like this type of setup up there, so you can talk to each other. So, just quickly, I want you on your sticky nose, just write a word or two on why are you doing this work? Because you didn't have to be forced to do this work, why are you a board member, why are you have many years of being a superintendent, why? Just tell me your why, just kinda jot on, bullet points on what is your true why about doing this type of work? So anyone, just give, tell me what your why is. What's your why?
I see the children, totally.
Children, thank you, we always have to make sure that, cause you believe this, I've done this, and sometimes I'm like, what's missing? No one said the children. What else?
I see this work as building the future.
Building the future? What else?
I hit, it's the same, pretty much, the children, and, uh, it's like building future, but it's also for the next gen, our current and next generation, so they can achieve.
Mm-hmm. And you know you are preparing kids for jobs that we don't, they, we don't know what they are. You know, you gotta figure out, we're gonna prepare them for college career and life. You know, you gotta figure out, we're gonna prepare them for college, career and life. But we don't know what's gonna be waiting for them. That's a tough left, heavy left right there. What else?
It's my home, my community.
Community, thank you. What else?
I could um interrupting inequitable systems. So we can do all those things one from one.
In- inequitable.
Systems.
Systems, yeah.
Representing those that are not here.
Yeah, you were selected to represent the educational needs of the community. And you all, unless you are all on the same block together, you know, you are all spread out, and that's why the different voices are so important. Of understanding what the needs are. And it's not that one is better than the other, but that's why you're elected in certain areas too. Why do you do what you do, Dr. Lee?
I'm gonna give all students, particularly our historically underserved students, the opportunity that they deserve. For their, for their future and our future.
Yeah. So what's it, what do you have, what's already, there was some commonality here, the community is important. Interrupting inequitable systems, that is constant regardless that people think that that's not a nice word. You can still do equity work without calling it equity work, and we're not trying to sugarcoat anything, cause it's just a matter of. Pull the data of all the kids at the bottom. That will let you know that we have work to do, I don't care who it is. What do we do to give these children a little bit more, cause that's what they need, unapologetically? And, and I know when I spoke to each of you, it's important to focus on that. Because we are never gonna shame or blame kids. We know the kids are brilliant when they come here, they just learn differently, just like we did. And I'm sitting here looking at this, I'm like, really, I'm like, oh my gosh. I'm, I was thinking it was saying something simple, but I had to start seeing, I'm like, let me get back over here, because. Just this add up to four two-digit numbers using strategies based on place, value and properties of operations. I'm like, what? So just think about that, but then this made, this made me happy. I said, okay, this is cool. We just think again, what kids are engaged in, how are you preparing kids, different levels? Now, there may, maybe some kids or some adults who didn't even, don't even understand that, but how do you get them to do this same thing? Meeting them where they are, that's what equity is, right? And so, all, I always like to just have boards take the time to think about why you're doing this, cause again, you don't have to do this. Nobody's forcing you to. And when I would have board members say, but Deborah, when is it time to, to get off the board? And I said, well, when you are no longer effective. And only you can decide that. When you feel that you can't give anymore. You know, that's, you make that decision. But always wanna know what your why, that should um rejuvenate you, want you to come in. You should not feel like, oh, I gotta go to that board meeting, I act red. Why do you dread doing something that you volunteer for? That's, I always want, who does that? Go ahead.
There's one more word I would put is advocate.
Advocate.
There's a strong one right now for all of us.
All right, and this is for kids and adults?
Cause advocate education in general.
Yeah, for education, yeah.
And then we do have adults, because we have the um self-education that we have to advocate for.
Mm-hmm. And we have to remember too, even when we're talking about equity, it's for adults too. But there are adults who need a little bit more. And I think we were challenged with that during COVID, because we found out that there are some phenomenal teachers in the classroom. Those same teachers struggle sitting behind, you know, with technology. But that doesn't mean that they're not a brilliant instructor. So we have, that's equitable thing. What do we need to give you? Cause at the end of the day, we still have to give kids the best. So what do we need to give you to support you as an adult? And so we don't ever wanna forget the adults, we need the adults. Yes, the business we're in, educating kids, but we need the adults as well. Okay, so just always a reminder of why you do this work. So we said a little bit about it, so when you think about the, the changing landscape of education, of all the things that are going on. You know, what is the impact here? What would you say are some things that are, kinda keep you up at night, you know? What, how, the changing landscape of education, how is that impacting AUSD? Through, now we think about things that may even end up coming to the, on the board agenda, some decisions you have to make.
Many.
I thought that's not an issue here. How is money?
The main issue now.
The main issue.
How can we educate if we don't have the money to do it? And how do we keep what we have that is good?
Yeah.
That's doing the difference.
That's true, but I will say, Deborah, compared to other districts, we are not in a financial crisis. Um, I think it's figuring out over time, especially with this administration, presidential administration. If cuts are made, how will we make it? Cause we don't have that much to cut, like you're not in a dire situation.
Yeah, because you could be in a good financial state today. But what about next school year? So, this is um March, so you guys are doing your budget right now?
Yeah, we have our three-year positive budget, so we're okay.
But we don't know what can happen, and well, and because I, I remember four years ago with COVID. I reminded boards that something else is going to impact public education. Don't know what it is. But here we are again today.
We built such a good, good program on mental health, and we put in so many good support systems. That money, we know that in a year from now, we might have to look at all of that.
Or for mental health issues?
Yeah, just what we're gonna be able to keep them, well, we can't.
You guys have counselors and nurses and all those?
No, nurse, yeah.
You have counselors?
Counselors.
Did you, have you ever had nurses?
No. One. No.
Is that a need, is that something that's important?
We have one nurse overseeing.
Do you guys ever talk about that?
No.
How do you, have you ever asked, is that important? Do kids need that? Do they need a space for that, or?
I think we definitely need it.
But if we talk about SEL, you know, really dealing with kids' social emotional learning, sometimes, do they have a place they can go to? Um, are there counselors, nurses? Wellness room, wellness.
Why I think, I've already heard of.
You do have wellness rooms?
Yes. I've already heard of accounts of children who were supposed to be getting ADHD meds, and the school was not complying. And so, for that reason, I believe nurses are important.
And so, I love these real scenarios. So if you say if a school's not in compliance. Why wouldn't they be if the board is monitoring compliance?
Because historically, I believe the board has been monitoring compliance, and that's why we're here now.
And so when you hear. Right. So when you hear that there's an issue like that, that's when the board has a conversation with the superintendent, just not accusing anybody of it. Just say, look, I started my, got my ear to the ground and I'm hearing, and it's a trend, it's not like a one-up. There's a trend and there's a need, so that's when you drop it to the superintendent and pretty much say, what's gonna be the plan? Can you give us an idea? And then let superintendent and staff figure out the dos and don'ts, pros and cons. And then share back with the board on, this is what we can do, do, or this is what we're currently doing, but we know we need to do X, Y, Z, but we don't have capacity. But you have the conversation, it's not a matter of, of again blaming anyone. If, but if you know they're not in compliance, then you unpack it to see what's the why behind that. But no, if no one ever asks them, then they're not telling you, they're just trying to make it every day. But that's that monitoring that the board has to do. And overseeing, just to make sure that we continue to be a well-oiled machine in all aspects. Because if that is a need for children and it's not being done, then you're not serving children in that regard. So that, that's what it looks like, again, of boards dealing with things below the line, if you will. But you're asking it in a broader sense, like, let us know, is there a challenge over there, is something we need? Do you need to put forth a recommendation to hire more people? Tell us what it is, because at the end of the day, we need this to happen. That's the conversations that boards and superintendents have. Because sometimes the community will tell you, will tell you more information than coming down and tell the superintendent. Or a principal or a teacher. They're gonna pull your coat, they're gonna see you at the grocery store, they're gonna walk with you at your turnip shop. Looking at what you put in your basket. And they're gonna share with you some of their experiences, and then what do you do with that information? Go ahead.
Just for clarity, so you're saying that there's no school nurses at any of our sites?
No, uh, we have one general nurse, as far as I remember, uh, overall. We don't have school nurses at sites. That I know of, right?
Cause what if they're diabetic? What if, I mean.
That's why, yeah, so there's district nurses providing those services, but I don't think there's a site nurse allocated.
Correct.
I don't know how many district.
But, so you said one nurse.
I say one, I don't know, there could be more, I'm just saying that we don't have them in the sites like we do our wellness centers and counselors.
Right, I personally, as a mom, speaking to you as a mom, I personally wait till my daughter get off the bus to give her her meds because of all of these concerns. Cause I, I, I know board members don't really have that trust, right? Um, that face, I should say. Because I'm not sure, I don't want anyone to miss a beat giving her her medication. And so hearing this, now as a board member, it's very disturbing.
Well, and this is where we have to find out, cause sometimes we'll hear things and we don't know what the real situation is, until you have the conversation. If that is an area, because if it's happening, you're one person saying, if we shout, you have thousands of kids that perhaps is impacting. And the, that's not the intent of not to be able to have a nurse give children. And so that's a broader question for the board, saying, okay, let's find out, how many do we have? What is our need in this district? Because the parents have let the, the, the um district know if their child needs um some type of medicine. So you have that, so again, you have the data. So that would just be a question, and perhaps the district site, maybe they know it, but because it has never risen to a board level. Because you're not aligning it to any of your strategic plans. Cause then it's too many little whack-a-mole ideas, you know? But if you had that, if you're talking about um student engagement, um, school safety and climate and all that, that falls there. So the key thing is, all the things that you're hearing outside of district. They can, you can find a place for them if you had a strategic plan, had goals, focus areas. They will fall right under that, because you don't want the parents to assume, well, I have to do what D's doing. Well, what if someone can't do that? Then what, the child goes all day without taking them? So you wanna think about that, because don't you, wouldn't you believe that that would impact their learning? See how it becomes a domino, it, it runs, it's just a domino. That will impact the main thing of why parents send their kids here, to learn.
Okay, what I understand is that we try to put in nurses in, because at the price that we have, we can't afford them. So then they centralize and put just a core. And I can't tell you how many, cause I don't know how that, that works. But each child that comes in that has a special need at each school is identified, so that those needs are taken care of at the school site by this core.
Mm-hmm. And again, this is a great scenario to see how the board, uh, get oversight. You find out how is there a need for this, and you get that from the superintendent and staff, telling you, yes, we have a need. So, do you need what's gonna be a policy that's gonna be put in place? All this gotta connect somewhere, the, the rules of the game, so that no one thinks it's an option to do this. It's a policy to do this. But the board can't make a policy if you don't have anything to back it, you don't know what's really going on. So that's when you, you do your fact check, you try to find out the facts, again. Not in a way trying to penalize or accuse someone of not doing their work. The end of the day, you have to serve children, you wanna serve them well. So perhaps it could just be, it's a disconnect somewhere. But because it's disconnected, the board can't even really answer the question, cause you don't, you don't know, for really, you don't know.
And I think that takes us back again to the question about like, what resources do we have? And, and really what that, to me that says, like, where are our values at when it comes to those resources? Because I think, you know, what worries me is, in the changing landscape of education, is like the different funding changes, both on the state level, on.
Yeah.
Plus on the federal level. Uh, but even when we say like, oh, are we in a good financial state, like compared to what? Because I think uh everyone needs more resources for their students, so. I think um we often get, uh, I think, focused on like, well, how's everyone else doing? When it's like, oh, actually, well, all over the state, like, we're not doing particularly well when it comes to like the resources we need. So when we're having like these conversations, it's sometimes like, okay, well, are we meeting this need? And what kind of resources is it gonna take to meet this need? And where can we either increase capacity, or are we having to make trade-offs, or? Because our students deserve like everything, right? Like, if we could give them everything, we would absolutely do it, but. We unfortunately like just don't have those kinds of resources.
Right. And there isn't any school district that is uh fully funded that, for some reason, we have not been able to figure out the formula on that one. And so even though you are in a good financial situation, for now. You also wanna think about, are you, financially it looks good, but are we serving children well? We're trying to put, keep money in the bank, if you will, to say we look good financially, but it's a deficit over here with our children. So, go ahead.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how to say this, and I'm trying to connect it to what you asked.
Mm-hmm.
But when I think about resources, um, I think about a couple of things, which is the structural racism that's happening. Um, in our system in particular, anti-unified, and of course, just throughout education, but for our district. And also when we do have resources. Like, people use the word all the time, and I have too, like, just ones, you know, underserved communities. I don't think a lot of our communities are underserved, I don't think they're served well with the resources we have. Right, cause we have some resources, but when I think about implementation, I'm like, we're, we have, and I'm just making this up, right? We have wellness centers at all of our schools, right? But how are they, who, who's manning them?
Yeah.
Are they trained?
Yeah.
Is it consistent? When the kids go back, do the teachers have the capacity to actually work with us to do, or do they each time say, go to the wellness center, we can't do it? You see what I'm saying? So I'm, I, I just keep thinking of, how are we serving students well with the resources we have? And then do we do, I kind of, we do kind of like resource mapping? This happens a lot when you're designing community schools. What do we have, right? Like, how many nurses do we have? How many, you know, like, whatever it is, um, for each site. Like, who's in the community that can support? What kind of partners can we have?
You call that mapping?
Yes, it's, but it's, it's this particular term, it's like resource mapping, something like that. Um, so anyway, just having those thoughts, because we have things at our schools, or resources at our schools. And not a lot, I agree, like, we, there are things that we need, areas that we need, but what we do have, how are we implementing it? And what, how do we know if it's working well?
And I, I'm so glad that, this is why I wanted to, cause you have it in, you just have to pull it out. The, these are the types of questions that the board should be putting out on the table. Have an expectation that if you know, again, it would be easier, and you're gonna get there, that you have these um area, focus areas. And that's how you ask certain questions. What's gonna be the process to get us here? Because you know what the, you know what you wanna do. And then that's what staff rolls up their sleeves and put together the how, this is how we can get to where the board wants. So that staffing understands that it's not just another thing to do. There is an expectation in this district. Number one, we are not lowering the bar for anybody. As the areas that we're not meeting, where the mark where we should, we're going to cut, huddle together, say, what do we need to do? Because that's not acceptable, because we're not lowering the bar. And, and so, but again, asking those questions, ensuring that there are supportive policies in place, so that everyone knows it's not an option. This is the policy. And then the, of course, in the superintendent's area, they all have ARs or administrative regulations on really telling how to do it. So anyone can kinda see, okay, I guess they're really serious about that. And then the board will expect a, a, a report out, how's it working? What, what else do you need? And how many kids did you get from here to here? They will know how much resources are, and if it's working in this building, let's duplicate that over here. Let's duplicate that over here, you may have to have pilot. But again, big picture wise, that's how the board should be thinking. That's how you can address things that are happening district-wide from the board level. Because you are to be, you are to monitor all of this. That's your job, to monitor and ensure that things that they say, that they, meaning the staff. Say they're doing, you wanna know, is it working? Because no one can, can continue just do, because we've always done it. We need evidence of success. So when even, whenever you're getting ready to just say, um, support a contract. What's gonna be the evidence that it's gonna get us from here to here? We're not gonna continue to renew contracts, cause we've always done that. Everyone should have to prove to the board that I'm worthy of you giving me a contract to do X, Y, Z. Because our kids are precious jewels. And if you're saying that you're going to, what, you have the best thing that's gonna get them, we need. And if you're saying that you're going to, what, you have the best thing that's gonna get them, we need evidence of that. And then that's the whole evaluation of staff, you have, the board has to make sure that those evaluations are in place, and that everyone's being held accountable. Those are some of the responsibilities of the board, how do you hold others accountable when you only have one staff? Well, the one way you do it is making sure those evaluations happen every year. You don't get to see them, but if the superintendent says, yep, certain time of the year, this is where you do it, you, you trust that that happens. Because if it's not, the board is gonna know. Cause it may end up being a time where just say a superintendent has to recommend a staff, we let go. The first thing you're gonna wonder, how were those evaluations? Oh, well, they haven't been evaluated in two years, what do you think is gonna happen to the district? You're gonna get sued, you didn't know that. And your job is to protect the district from being sued, and so is the superintendent to protect, so that's why you wanna make sure you have things in place. If we are supposed to evaluate, um, and, and again, it's the law, it's not an option, it is the law, superintendents, principals, teachers must be evaluated. Board members is optional, how about that, it's not required, but I'm so glad that you guys want to be done with yourself, right? So again, this, I'm just gonna move us, us along, just wanted to kinda get some thoughts out, and I will continue to build on. But when you think about governing, this is what governance is all about, you know? Regulatory, innovation, discussions, rules, that's what governance is, you know, higher level, okay? This is what good governance looks like. Okay, these, these are research-based, um, a, accounts of if board members participate in these areas. You show this when you're up at the diocese, this is what good governance looks like. So, as I click this button, I don't know whose face is gonna come up. So whoever comes up next will just select a word to tell me which one of these governance words really resonates with you. Who's the first one, oh, that just happens to be book, which one of these words really resonate with you about good governance?
I think for me right now, the transparent.
Transparent? Does a little bit more, to wind that.
I just feel that, I just feel that it's needed in our district, uh, I don't feel that it's really been there, um, in the past. And I would like to ensure that it is there.
Okay.
Actually really pleased to find out that this session will be recorded.
It'll be in transparent.
Let me just say, oh, so I was actually really glad to find out that this session will be recorded, um, because I think the transparency is really important. In fact, I even shared that with you at our last check-in, cause I've been really doing some internal reflection, reflection on what types of things I would like to bring as a part of this board. And transparency is definitely, the two that I've shared with, um, Dr. Wayne already, is first humanity and then transparency.
And, and transparent too is, is making sure that there are no hidden agendas about anything, what we talk about is open, we are focused on the district's work, all of that. We want everybody to get an understanding, but also remembering as you're up there, you are educating people. You, the board is the conduit between the district and the community. So it is your job to, and we have, one thing we have to be careful about is using all the acronyms, you know, for, we have to remember to say what it is, cause the average person like, what did they just say? That was, um, because you're educating, so bit, transparency is very important to you. Right, Mary, what about you, Mary?
Following the rule of the law.
Huh?
Following the rule of law.
Following the rule of law, tell us more.
In other words, whatever we have in place, um, the rules for our, our, our laws, our, um, what do I say, board rules, rules of the system.
And how often do you guys look at your pilots?
I've been looking at them a lot, because I'm new, so I don't know about anybody else.
Mm-hmm, and sometimes it could, cause do you use board docs?
Yeah.
It's easy to be electronically, where it's there, it's just as a reminder, but sometimes we just have to remember, um, cause you can't violate the, the law of land. You can have a policy, but a policy can't violate the, the law statute and all that, so sometimes you just have to be reminded that they'll, they are there for a reason. And yes, usually new board members, you wanna make sure that you don't cross over the line and do something that you're not supposed to. So absolutely, so I, I like that you're following the, um, the rule of law. Dr. J.
Um, I like all of, oh, I like a lot of them, not all of them, uh, but accountable, I would say.
Okay, tell us more about that.
I feel like, um, one of the, the main things for a board is to be accountable to the community and to the schools and districts, right? Like, and do what we said we wanna do, but also hold people, hold the superintendent accountable and support them at the same time. I always, I talk about it in terms of healthy accountability, right? So not to push fear in people, but to say, here are the goals, here, you know, they tell us what the benchmarks are, like how we're gonna get there, and share that information with us. And, and that's what I mean by accountable.
And it is okay to hold, because sometimes when I say to board, well, you know, your main, one of your main responsibilities is to hire a superintendent, they're like, yeah, hire and fire him. I said, well, why, why do you have to say fire them? You wanna say hire and support them, because the way I look at it, if that seat's become a revolving type of chair, it's not the credentialized person. I always say it's the board members, I'm like, that's you, there's something wrong with this board, if you can't keep a superintendent, cause you have one employee. They have month, how many staff is in it? A lot more than what board members, you have one, and if you can't get that one right, then I'm gonna have to look at the board, which I've had to deal with. Some boards where within four years, they had three superintendents. And I find like, it's, you're the problem, you were really the problem. And they worked, and they knew, and it was, it was, my career started out with working with all of the most dysfunctional, because nobody else would. So I didn't mind, as long as they listen, but I said, but four years, you have three superintendents, nobody wants to come here. So you, your job too, even now, as today, you want to make it attractive. And any superintendent who'll be interested in working, they're watching you, they're interviewing you. There's no superintendent wants to come, and then their career ends because of a board. So again, that's all important, I, I appreciate you saying, being accountable, and it is the support, because you want to give your superintendent everything they need to be successful. Now, if any superintendent decides to go in and go rogue and do whatever they wanna do, that's on them. But as long as the board is saying, what do you need? If you tell me you got it, I'm gonna believe you, if you say, I got this, I'm good, I'm gonna believe you, until you come back and say, okay, I, I need some help. But holding everyone accountable is so important, and having that relationship where the superintendent understands that you are going to ask questions. Not in a way of that I don't believe what you're saying, but I need some questions answered so that I know that we're good. The board is saying, cause it's our responsibility to make sure this, this district doesn't fail children, it's our responsibility. So that, that's really important here.
All right, Antonio.
Um, let's see, I will go with efficient, I think, uh, like I was saying, there's, we can spend the, our entire lives talking about students, talking about all the things they need, all the different ways we can improve things. But making sure that we're focused on what are the greatest needs, where are our values at, and making sure that we're being as quick and purposeful about the time that we're spending.
Absolutely, and just what you just said, it's a conversation that I should be able to hear up there. Whatever the topic is, so that no one's feeling any kind of way, you should question, okay, are we being efficient about, is this going to improve students' outcome? That's okay to ask that, and especially if someone brings something forth to you, a program, ask those type of, type of questions. Because at the end of the day, your job is to make sure that the educational experience for these students is a good one, for them to be able to function when, whether they choose to go to college or not. Life skills, and, and I'm trying to remember, I know you've seen it in the paper, it was in Kentucky? That there's a senior who is suing the, the school district, cause she's going to college.
It was like Rhode Island or something.
Rhode Island, it must be, yeah, and because she can't even read and write.
Oh, wow.
She's going, she's got accepted, she went to college.
Cause that happened in LA too, years ago, when I was a principal, yeah, there were several superintendents who were on that, uh, just kinda supporting students in it. Uh, but students from LA Unified were saying they left school unable to read professionally, and they were suing the district. It might even sue the state, but for sure.
Yeah, and I, I don't know what the outcome of that can be, I don't know, but that would make me pause as a, you know, as a board member, and I always ask board members, well, I say, what's the most exciting thing about being a board member? It's like, oh, graduation, good to get dialed up, you know, go hand them their diploma, I said, well, good. So, as you're handing them a diploma, how confident are you that they're, that you prepared them? So what decisions did you make that impact middle school kids, that hindered them in high school? And then that makes everyone kinda think, so as you're making decisions, you have to think about that. Is this the long term, is this going to impact, or are we just talking about dealing with something now? So yeah, how confident are you that you prepared them? Cause yeah, that's a celebratory type of, the type of the, uh, the school year, everyone's hype, but even higher ed is saying, hey, K twelve, they're not ready. So do you have a relationship, it really should be thinking, K sixteen, somewhere in there, you know? Um, do we talk to them, do we know how successful they are, do we follow kids, are, are we in a place where we can follow kids? They may sign up to go to college, but they, but they drop out in one year. Do we, do you have, and you know, most districts don't have a whole research department, but you can partner with, you know, universities, uh, have an intern, follow kids. After four years, how many of them completed, how many of them completed two years? That will let you know how successful this district really was, instead of the numbers, we graduate ninety, ninety-nine percent. But then if I pull your data about chronic accentism, that's weird, don't you have to be in school to learn? So that does, that's, that's opposite, so what are we doing? So it would just make you kinda question, cause you wanna get to a good place. Dee, you happen to be a Latin girls' Dee, gonna come in here.
I mean.
Look at you, what's, which words for you, Dee?
It's the same that was already said, accountability, I mean accountable.
Accountable, so what's more?
And so that's very important, um, it's not like do as I say, but not as I do, you know what I'm saying? But you're meaning that you have to just make sure that we are accountable, like you said, the way that the diocese, this is the first time I ever seen the diocese this way, uh, being, I'm used to the curve, right? And so speaking at people and watching, we don't know, I personally don't know how many people are watching online, right? So it could be a hundred people watching or even more, and we're up speaking about something, and then they don't see what we're speaking about, right? So being accountable, and I, one thing I can say about everyone in the room, we do hold each other accountable. Um, I always say to myself and to my staff at work, you don't have to tell off of me, cause I'll tell off myself, right? And if you bring something to my attention, I'm gonna take accountability, so it's really good to, so far that we do have good accountability in our team, and I really appreciate that.
And, and that's good, you guys are a good team, it's just because of the situation that you're in, you just have to acknowledge some things which you already started out. And knowing that that's the plan, you know, we gotta get, whether we got a strategic plan, we got all the pieces out there, we just gotta pull it together. That's our focus, then whatever the board is talking about, we can connect it to the strategic plan topics, okay?
Did you plan on, do you, I wanted to re, um, make comments on the words we didn't choose.
You can, sure.
Okay, so inclusive participatory, consensus oriented, and responsive, to me are the ways in which, it's like the, the way you work to get to those things there, yeah. And so I didn't wanna leave that out, because, uh, I know from my style, like all those things are important, um, to get to accountable.
Hmm, absolutely, thank you for putting that in the room, absolutely. And so you, you're focusing on the right things, you guys are not far off from each other, but that's the uniqueness of being elected as individuals. And you're coming together for the same cause, same reason, the same passion that you have of doing, uh, what's best for students, okay? So, I'm gonna do this quickly and then we'll take a break, remember the communication style, what do you see here? See what you're, uh?
Big ears.
I get different answers every time I do, what do you see?
Collaboration.
Yeah, or not.
Or, or, okay, well, communication.
Discussion.
Discussion with everybody?
You can't tell.
We're all talking at the same time? The one on the end looks like, why am I here?
With hands, yeah, yes, yes, that's true. But usually with the hands, you know, that's, you're open to people, when you use your hand, you know, talking. And probably three of them are really more engaged, the three in the middle, the other one, like, why am I here? Um, this one like, hmm, I'm listening to maybe one or two. But again, this is just, just a fun thing I do, just say, how do we communicate, what do we look like? Am I making sure that everyone's included, like, would anyone say this, like, hey, what's going on? Cause if you really, really look at that one, that person's head is like turned all the way around, not even engaged. It's just a little thing I, I wanna show you, when we communicate, we have to even watch our body languages, okay? This is what we know, we have a natural, uh, communication style, um, that we do without thinking, again, this is not personality, it's just our natural way to communicate. And we achieve, achieve our best results by adapting your style to others, when you're on a team, you have to adapt. If it's just one, if you work by yourself, you can be who you are all the time, but when you're on a team, you have to adapt to other people. It takes energy. But that's just so you know, sometimes you're like, woo, we can say this about our own family, we're like, woo, they just worked my nerves. I just got, I, I'm exhausted after I talked to this person, you know, um, because it's unnatural for you. But if we're forced to adapt, we go back to what we are comfortable, okay? So just remember it in yours, your styles, when we're under stress, we revert back to our own communication style. This is the spectrum that usually people are on, um, you know, you got the motivators, persuaders. I think out of doing it, I think I probably done this over a hundred times, I have one board member who was in the middle, and that's blend. Where they couldn't really handle every type of style, um, and he went from the board president, now he's city council, now he's running for mayor. Cause he, he has the skills to be, he blends, now this is where this team lands. Doers and supporters. Okay? Doers, I, I had a team of, I think, nine, and seven were doers. And the superintendent was in there, and she was like, that's why we're all over each other, but you guys, these are the doers. And, and so, um, usually when you're diagonal, not that there's tension, but sometimes it can be a little stressful. When you're dealing with this, when the supporters, Dee and Mary, have to deal with the doers, okay?
That's interesting, cause I would find, I would, intuitively that tells me it would actually, it should work, because there's one who's a supporter and then the other one who's bad action. So that's, that's kinda interesting, could you explain that a little bit more?
Well, the, the two doer, or the two supporters you're seeing?
Yeah, cause it seems like the more tension would be between us three.
No, you guys are all over each other, cause you're trying to do, there's not tension, you're just stepping on, cause you're, I'm gonna tell you why. Uh, but usually it's the supporter, cause they're there to help you, and y'all are trying to do, and maybe you're not waiting to get any support, okay? So quickly, this is what I'm gonna show you. Not that one. Not that one, okay, where is it, oh, here it is. Okay, a doer, your primary interest is to get things done. Sometimes when you just focus on getting the things done, are you waiting for anybody to support you? That's usual, again, this is your preferred style, so doers are typically people whom others perceive as very active, independent.
I think I am, because I think I've, I've worked in teams for so long that I know that you have to build consensus before moving forward, so I always try to build consensus. Of course, you can't force somebody to meet you.
And you can fit, right, you can have these tendencies, but it's what others perceive from you. So again, this is just, again, just kinda give you an idea of what doers, and I'm going to, you're gonna get a copy of this, I just wanted you to see where this team is. The key thing is, let's go down here to your strengths as a doer. You worry a little bit about what others think and compete with yourself to do.
Me and Jack, it's so funny, cause that first one, me and Jack have had that exact conversation about myself, like where.
So this is what people are getting from you, and you, you are very goal oriented. You are recognized, um, routinely for your ability to achieve, you are task oriented. So the doers, would y'all say that's a yes for your, your strengths? And Mary and Dee, do you see these strengths in your colleagues? It's okay, tell them, it's okay, not a bad, again, it's not personality, what do you, what do you guys, what do you see, supporters?
Them too, I, I really don't, and this is not a date towards you at all, but I really haven't really established a relationship, really don't talk as much. But with them too, I lean on them. But with them too, I lean on them.
Okay. Okay.
Um, and they, I hope they know that I will support them, um, they, that's, but it's funny, cause I took this test so many times and I've always been a, it's two things, supporter and, um, a helper.
Helper, mm-hmm.
So when, when that came out, but yeah, I, they are very detail oriented, um. They, I don't see them stepping on themselves, but if this is what it says, um, and then they do, um, they're, they like to achieve. I do too.
And again, some of these, you're gonna notice they, you have the same ones, but look at the, some of the challenges that as a doer. When you seek to persuade others, you could inadvertently, or on purpose, become manipulative and use all available methods. Again, it's not personality, it's sometimes it's what people are receiving from you. Because you're about getting it done. You have a tendency to inadvertently hurt feelings. Um, because you, you successfully separate feelings from issues, feelings are likely to be hurt. That's, sometimes it's gonna happen, not that it's, any malice intended. You often don't take time to understand the feelings of others.
If my brother were here right now.
You'd say yes.
Absolutely. If my brother stayed with me right now, he's recovering from a surgery. And I read that, I was like, oh god.
And so again, just remembering that you have these tendencies of how you communicate. And you will try to adapt to the supporter, once you see what the supporter needs. But if, if it's, takes so much out of you, you're gonna go back to this. And the key thing is just knowing who's at the table, that's all. Not asking you to change, but you need to know and, um, your superintendent will have to know, uh, how these communicate, cause the superintendent can't have five different ways of communicating. You guys would have to agree, the best way to communicate. And knowing that when we're on the dais, you may see some of these things. Jag may just say, read, read it, whatever it is, just like it is, and then just look at you like, this, this where you don't take it personal, because now you know that's her preferred way of communicating. She's done her homework, you've done your homework. Now I'm just giving you, cause we gotta get it done. We don't have time to kick the can down the road, okay? Let's say you, Antonio.
About what?
About, is this true? You're saying, yes, it's very true?
I think I've gotten feedback like this before, yeah.
Yeah, it is good that, especially a board president is a doer. Um, that, that's important. So again, this is just something, so you know who the teammates are, and let's, let's look at a supporter real quick. Supporter, your interest when communicating are relationships and avoiding conflict.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay, so this, these are your two colleagues, okay? Um, you are an excellent friend and confidant, you will go all out your ways to please others, okay? And sometimes give up on things that are important to you, okay? You are usually calm and patient, people person, is that you married to? Calm and cool and collective. You like being with others and are aware of the needs of others. So let's look at your strengths here. This is what your colleagues may see. You're a good team player, and you take the needs and feelings of others into account. When you think about those doers, where sometimes like, mm, your feelings hurt, I'm sorry, here, take a tissue, you're crying. So don't take it personal, because, but now you guys, now you know, you have two people. Now you not, you have two people that you have to like, okay, this is where you adapt, okay? Um, you are orderly, you're structured, and you respect deadlines and schedules, you want to, cause you got doers. And they're gonna be looking at you sideways like, oh, okay. You get along with people from all walks of life, you tend to be good at routine tasks, and you are practical and make good decisions based on tried and true methods. That's what, that's what supporters do. Um, what do you, do you guys see this? You're saying yes, you see this in your colleague?
I can say, I don't talk to Ms., to Mary as much, I can say for Dee, I see it one hundred percent. Every part of that. Um, I know for Mary in terms of every time, I wouldn't say every time, but oftentimes at board meetings, she'll ask, what is the community thing? And so many words, she might not use those words, but it could be, well, I talked to this parent, she brought up like, have we, have we, has the search firm talked to enough Latino parents, right? So she's always, um, thinking about other people.
Yes, yeah.
Um, so I definitely see that.
Yeah, I, I watched that board meeting, I, I heard that too, yes. Let's look at some challenges. Your kind nature leads you to internalize problems. And you take the blame for circumstances that are out of your control, cut that out, not, you're out of your control. Don't wanna know ulcers.
We would say, we don't care.
Right, like, okay, next. Yeah, or you was like, don't take it personal, that's what you guys are gonna, doers are gonna say. You have a tendency to justify the negative behaviors of others and do not defend yourself, even when you are right. And that one could be, and it may, cause you don't want, remember you don't like conflict.
Yeah, but I won't let, nobody accuse me of something I didn't do. I mean, I will speak up, but.
And that's good. In an effort to preserve harmony, you may sacrifice results. And this could be, you just won't, if three or three of them are saying strongly, this is the, uh, uh, maybe I won't throw mine in the ring. That's what it looks like when you're governing and, and, even though they can say, well, we got three, but that's not what this team is gonna do, right?
Or otherwise, say, okay, you have three, they're gonna go in that direction, maybe it's not so bad, we'll go.
There you go, that's exactly what it would look like. So you would just keep it to yourself.
But personally, I do not like confrontation.
Yeah.
I can't handle it.
And so the doers, you busybodies over here doing, getting it done, you may have to pump, pump the brakes and pause and check in on those two. Are you sure? Because once that gavel is hit, it's the will of the board now. So just kinda check in and make sure that they, this is your chance. And if they can just say, I hear, yeah, I just wanted to kinda say this, but I can go along. That's what the two supporters may need to hear, okay?
Hopefully, I mean, I'm sure we'll probably get to it, but hopefully that's been good, at least from my standpoint, that, like, I try to make sure that everyone gets a chance to get like their words in there when I'm, before the board starts, so if there's any issues or bad, it's like a good for me to know.
Well, I can say to you, it's been a great change this year. Or should I say half of last year this year? So I don't, I don't, just to answer your question, um, yes, you always stop and you pause, or any other comments or anything like that, I don't think that's the, the challenge necessarily, not for me. What I see is needing spaces like this to actually hash it out, because you might, I might have a quick response on the dais. But we didn't get a chance as a team, as a governing body to talk deeply about it, right? So it's just like, okay, if we all say yes, we all say yes, we just, is this really our values? Is this really what we want? And I think that's the space that we.
Yeah, always allowing that space. And it's when you say discussion, you have to have discussion. Some boards will just use it like, even if sometimes I hear or I watch board president, any discussion? Go on, it's like, before someone could like, get ready, so make sure you have a long enough pause. But other board members, it is your responsibility, if you have anything to say, that's the time to say it during discussion, cause you had a public set, setting. You want the public to hear certain things, and then you're checking in with each other. If I just need some clarity on this, whatever that is, that is the time to do it, it's not the discussion that's important, we don't do that. Cause everything is right there on the dais.
But I think if we, yes, and, um, I, I think if, this is a good conversation in terms of getting towards our values, because sometimes, like, there could be scenarios where we're here a really long time talking about it, but the real issue is we haven't discussed our values. Right, and so there are some contracts where I'm like, I actually wouldn't have put this. I wouldn't, right? Uh, but we haven't discussed our values in terms of, or we, we are, we don't yet have finalized goals to say, is it, so does that make sense?
And what you do, yeah.
And I feel like there's just, there, we need deeper conversations.
And I'm glad you're putting it out, cause so when you guys get to that, and when you're doing your goals, we're just gonna touch the surface, this is the foundational. But putting goals together is a heavy lift, and that's what we are going to do, uh, with our next session, you will have, you will have goals. I'm just giving you the, the tools you're gonna need to get there, and being able to have discussions like this and putting it out there. To say, you know, sometimes we don't, we can't rush and do certain things, because we need, I value whatever you're bringing to the table. Because we're trying to get to a place where it's what's best. And I don't want to assume anything about my colleagues. And the way, whatever, you know, education background or your lived experience, we need to talk about that. And if, if it's conflicting, and if it doesn't align with what we said we were going to do, transparent, what we told people we were gonna do, we need to adjust on that. So again, that's what it looks like in action. You wanna say something, I'm gonna wrap up in like one minute, but go ahead.
So the question you just asked, if, you know, if you, if we experienced that, so what Dr. Jag was saying, sometimes it does, for me being a newly board member, it's still like I was sharing with, um, trust me, Oga, that sometimes I do feel like a fish in this big old, like a small fish, like beta fish in this big ocean. And sometimes I do feel a little rushed, and so, and I, and I, it makes me feel like a little bit like, well, like you said, I don't think I would have voted that way, but because the time is like, we gotta get to this. And so having these, these intimate discussions about certain things, um, would be very, very helpful. And then as the president, it would be very, very helpful to me. Um, of course, I'm reading everything that my sitting out and stuff like that, highlighting it, but these sessions here are very helpful.
Yeah, and you have to have time to talk about it, because you may assume some things, and what you're reading too. And until I put it out there to bounce it off, like, I'm like, oh my gosh, I didn't, I had an aha moment because of what you just said. I really was going down a whole different path. But that's what it looks like again in action for the team. So lastly, can we take a break? When you remember this, when you talk, you are only repeating what you already know. But if you listen, you may learn something, yeah. And so always keeping that in mind when I'm listening to my colleagues, when I listen to the superintendent, when I listen to the staff. I don't want to get so ahead of it where you, you're not doing that active listening, you know, really listening to for understanding. We hear that all the time, but we have to practice this. Um, the journey that you're on now, you're going to be tested in these areas. You know, and, and so I'm just trying to prepare you for that. So we're gonna take a, a quick stretch break, ten minutes? Got enough for you? And we'll come back, ten minutes?
Yeah, no, I've been, I'm like, I'm.
All right, we're gonna jump back into, of course, I just wanted you to see this again as we went over the communications and we're gonna remember who's on the team. So now I'm just gonna focus us on why we're here. When I asked you before the why, and some of you may have seen this quick video, but anybody familiar with this video? Oh, not good. So, I want you to listen to this video, just kinda jot down again, big picture of the video. Um, yes, there'd be some things that are like, oh, that's not us, that's not the point. I just want you to kinda jot down some thoughts that you have, there's some nuggets in here that I want you to capture. So let's listen to the, the people versus the school system.
Like one said, everybody's a genius, but if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it will live its whole life believing that it is stupid. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, today on trial, we have modern day schooling. Glad you could come. Not only does he make fish climb trees, but also makes them climb down and do a ten mile run. Tell me, school, are you proud of the things you've done? Turning millions of people into robots, do you find that fun? Do you realize how many kids relate to that fish swimming upstream in class, never finding their gifts, thinking they are stupid, believing they are useless? Well, the tide has calmed, no more excuses. I call school to the stand and accuse him of killing creativity, individuality, and being intellectually abusive. He's an ancient institution that has outlived his usage. So, your honor, this concludes my opening statement, and if I may present the evidence of my case, I will prove it.
Proceed.
Exhibit A, here's a modern day phone, recognize it? Here's a phone from a hundred and fifty years ago. Big difference, right? Stay with me, here's a car from today, and here's a car from a hundred and fifty years ago. Big difference, right? Well, get this, here's a classroom of today, and here's a class we used one hundred and fifty years ago. Now ain't that a shame? In literally more than a century, nothing has changed, yet you claim to prepare students for the future? But with evidence like that, I must ask, do you prepare students for the future or the past? I did a background check on you and let the record show that you were made to train people to work in factories, which explains why you put students in straight rows, nice and neat. Tell them sit still, raise your hand if you wanna speak, give them a short break to eat, and for eight hours a day, tell them what to think. Oh, and make them compete to get an A, a letter which determines product quality, hence grade A of meat. I get it, back then times were different, we all have a past, I myself am no Gandhi. But today, we don't need to make robot zombies, the world has progressed. And now we need people who think creatively, innovatively, critically, independently, with the ability to connect. See, every scientist will tell you that no two brains are the same, and every parent with two or more children will confirm that claim. So please explain why you treat students like cookie cutter frames or snapback hats, giving them this one size fits all crap.
What's your like?
Sorry, your honor, but if a doctor prescribed the exact same medicine to all of his patients, the results will be tragic, so many people would get sick, yet when it comes to school, this is exactly what happens. This educational malpractice, where one teacher stands in front of twenty kids, each one having different strengths, different needs, different gifts, different dreams, and you teach the same thing, the same way? That's horrific. Ladies and gentlemen, the defendant should not be acquitted, this may be one of the worst criminal offenses ever to be committed. And let's mention the way you treat your employees, objection.
Overruled, I wanna hear it.
It's a shame, I mean, teachers have the most important job on the planet, yet they're underpaid? No wonder so many students are shortchanged. Let's be honest, teachers should earn just as much as doctors, because a doctor can do heart surgery and save the life of a kid, but a great teacher can reach the heart of that kid and allow him to truly live. See, teachers are heroes, they often get blamed, but they're not the problem. They work in a system without many options or rights. Curriculums are created by policymakers, most of which have never taught a day in their life. Just obsessed with standardized tests, and they bubble in a multiple choice question will determine success. That's outlandish. In fact, these tests are too crude to be used and should be abandoned, but don't take my word for it. Take Frederick J. Kelly, the man who invented standardized testing, who said, and I quote, "These tests are too crude to be used and should be abandoned." Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, if we continue down this road, the results will be lethal. I don't have much faith in school, but I do have faith in people. And if we can customize healthcare, cars, and Facebook pages, then it is our duty to do the same for education, to upgrade and change and do away with school spirit, 'cause that's useless. Unless we're working to bring the spirit out of each and every student, that should be our task. No more common core, instead, let's reach the core of every heart in every class. Sure, math is important, but no more than art or dance, let's give every gift an equal chance. I know this sounds like a dream, but countries like Finland are doing impressive things, they have shorter school days, teachers make a decent wage, homework is non-existent, and they focus on collaboration instead of competition. But here's the kicker, boys and girls, their educational system outperforms every other country in the world. Other places like Singapore are succeeding rapidly, schools like Montessori, programs like Khan Academy, there is no single solution. But let's get moving, because while students may be twenty percent of our population, they are one hundred percent of our future. So listen to their dreams, and there's no telling what we can achieve. This is a world in which I believe, a world where fish are no longer forced to climb trees. I rest my case.
Okay, what are your thoughts about that? Huh?
Say, the first thing is I like, I don't mean horrible, but um, the no competition.
Yeah.
Meeting students where they're at. And it made me think of a set of twins that I had, um, I cared for years ago. They are identical, like, sometimes they fooled me, but they were so different in so many ways. And so, um, even, we can see the students being the same way. Um, and I like how he said this, because they're the same student doesn't mean that, I mean, they're like the third grade, we're all third grades. But each student is going to learn differently. And so as teachers, um, and as supporters of teachers, to meet them where they're at. Um, value our teachers, we can never pay them enough for what they do, but at least meet them and show them that we do see your value, you know? There's so much, but I have a lot going on.
I like that, I like that. But I was, it resonated with you watching this.
To me, I was like.
Every time I watch this, I'm like, ooh.
When I watched it, I felt like it was me, as one of those children in that block. Not being seen and not being heard. And rows after rows, and teachers that were teaching that, dealing more with those that were responding or those that they had an interest in. I mean, thank you for that, I don't have anybody say that, but thank you for putting that in.
How about you, Angela, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I liked the part where it was, uh, they're talking about all these different solutions, and I like not one single one is gonna be like the actual answer. Then you have to be looking, um, everywhere and applying things to everybody.
Not one solution, which means you should be asking a lot of questions, though. What's this compared to, what's this compared to what we already do? Do we just need to pivot or, you know, scaffold up a little bit or whatever?
I like the word cookie cutter.
Yeah, I, that was my experience with school cookie cutter. You all, you will only be a secretary, that's what I was told. So you go to the career center and you learn how to be, I just happened to be able to type eighty words a minute and do a hundred words a minute in shorthand. Yes, I don't think it's shorthand anymore, but I was told that that's what you all, you will never be anything but a secretary. Yeah, but putting kids in boxes because of the tracks, the side of town I lived. You know, so all of that, I always wanted our kids to be subjected to that. Doctor Chen, what say you?
I just wrote down some words that kind of resonated with me, art, dance, collaboration, innovation, no single solution, and a hundred percent of our future.
Yeah, actually, no single solution, that. I love that, yeah. So, how about you, Oga?
I go quite a bit from a lot of different perspectives. I just, um, I picked up on how he talked about the education system's inability to evolve. Like that it didn't evolve with, um, our changing times. It originally was used for faculty workers, and now we need more intellectuals, more inspired creativity, um, customized education plans, and then competition versus collaboration.
I mean, competition, collaboration. You know, even some of the things, when you talk about collaboration instead of competition, how do you, as a board, address something like that? How do you know if that's happening in this school system? How do you know? Uh, what would you see? What are people reporting to you?
I think our kids are really good at it, actually. I think, um, one of the things, like, e- even if we're steering them towards competition, our kids actually collaborate a lot better than we ever did before. When my daughter, when we were PTA over at, um, Park Middle School, we hosted this award ceremony for, um, an art thing that PTA had put on. And my daughter was just so taken aback because like the group of kids that were there to get the awards, man, they were cheering, 'cause we couldn't get some of the parents to come, 'cause we held it the whole day. But the kids, man, they showed up for each other, and they were like booting and hollering and like cheering each other on and just going on about like how, how great each other's artwork was and stuff. So, I just think, um, I think you just see stuff like that, I think our kids are good at it. And I'm thinking about like my granddaughter now in track, and she's like, you know, the way the kids support each other, and they just, you know, it's not about, um, necessarily winning, but did you PR? So like you're competing with yourself, like, did you get your own personal winner, and then we cheer each other on in those moments too.
And also, if we use the language that they are student athletes, instead of, but then people will watch you to see, how are you making some decisions? Where I worked with one board where they're really grappling with staff is pushing the board to change a policy that lowers the bar, saying that they could almost have a D average, so they could play sports. So this is what it will look like if you value athlete, athleticism over academic. So what I always try to say to you, what does, how will I know, what do you see? That's one way that this particular district staff was like, look, kids only come to school because, this is where they didn't think much of some of the kids. Um, they only come to school because of sports. It's like, wow, what would you, you know?
That's interesting, 'cause I've actually heard that here too, and I'm not really actually very aligned with that, you know, sports mentality. But, um, that's why running was my sport in high school, and why running is my granddaughter's sport in high school. We did it, it just had different competitions than some of the other team sports, um, especially football in high schools, right? But, um, uh, one of the things that I love hearing out of the cheer coach out of Park Middle is she called, what does she call that? Um, is it scholar, scholar athletes or athletic scholars? And she's like, oh no, my athletic scholars, you will have your work turned in, you will be, um, you represent the team, so you will be civil and, you know, you would behave in a, in a mindful manner when you're in class. You like school, some of them were cheerleaders because they weren't acting up to form.
Right, and then this again, this is where the board comes in. What policies do you have in place that staff can pull, go to that and say what they expected? So they wouldn't have to make it a board issue to say, or petition, trying to get a student to go play in a conference if their grades are taking. Because you have a policy in place that says they have to maintain a C average, so why are you bringing that? That should never make the agenda. Because of that, you may have community come in and fuss about it, but you can always say according to policy, da-da-da-da-da. This is what it is, so it really would be to, if a child is participating in sports, remember the coaches, that they know this policy as well, and are you giving that student? that they know this policy as well, and are you giving that student additional support that they need? Because you don't want their grades to take, to play sports. So again, what it looks like through the lens of governing is to make sure, what do you have in place? Will anyone be able to challenge you, like, well, you haven't even updated your policy in ten years? And now you're saying our expectation is up here, but the policy doesn't support that. So again, that's the board's job, so hoping that you have, and I, and you'll see the results of the survey, where it says, do you have a mechanism to review policy? So a board's like, well, the state association gives us an update. But their requirement is just to keep you in compliance. They don't know the nuances that are happening here. That's the board's job. And I know policy is not the most exciting thing to do, but it's one of the most important things to do. And it's almost like the stop sign that's out there. You don't have to worry about that stop sign, since it's there, everybody knows you're supposed to stop. If you don't, you have to deal with the consequences. Same with board setting policy. Get those policies in place that protect the district, protect the students. And staff will, they probably review policy more than board members. Because staff members know, I need to know how to navigate. Let me see if the board has a policy on X, Y, Z. And that's why you get, you may get a lot of recommendations from administrators, cause they're dealing with the boots on the ground. Recommending that, perhaps the board, you need to review this policy, because this is what's happening in this district. And if we don't have a policy in place, we may get kind of hit with something. And so that's why a lot of policies come through administrators, but only the board can create policy and approve policy, we know that. But that's all, again, working together, administrators are, they see things before the board, but it is the board's responsibility to have a mechanism. Whether it's, is anyone here really loves, do you have, do you do committees?
My master has been policy.
Do you have committee, you operate as a committee of a whole, or you have committees? You have, you have a policy committee?
I recommended it my first year.
Okay, I'm a backup.
Oh boy, I should say, I thought I'd say, what is it?
You don't have a policy committee? And why is that?
We didn't have like any actual like committee, again, it's like going to like these structures.
I would say, tell me more, tell me more. Tell me, okay, so, if the board's responsibilities, top three. Remember the new board member when I had my orientation? That orientation with you, I do an orientation? No, I didn't, you guys went to CSBA, didn't you?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you would have had the Zoom call orientation with me, always ask the new board, what are your top three responsibilities? And it is hiring and supporting your superintendent, setting policy, and being good stewards of the budget. So your top three responsibility. And here there are bullet points, so those are the top three. So if you are a policymaking entity, governance is policy. So I say. But I know you're going to pretty soon. Uh, and I will, when I, um, as I'm working with you, I'll create a Google folder for you, and I have a folder that will say resources. And as I'm talking to you, I'll see what areas you may need some information on, cause you don't have to recreate them with. I know CSBA has, they do talk about, um, how to put policies, I mean, how to put, uh, committees together. And the top ones are usually curriculum, policy, um, finance, um, sometimes there's a finance committee, just depending. Two or three, when you only have a board of five, you don't want to have too many, cause you can only have two people. Um, but policy you definitely should have. Because some, in the policy committee, you will have, just say, well, every three months, we're going to look at this chunk. We'll give it back to the board, cause the policy committee, people don't make the decisions, but they've been tasked to look it over, make sure it thumbs up. Give it to the board, then you do your first and second reading, things of that nature.
Up to Antonio's point, and to kind of dig in a little bit among that, is there's a change in culture on the board.
Okay.
And then also, we're, we're, I'm hoping, that with the new superintendent, there'll be a change in culture in the district. So in the past, it was reliant policy changes and updates, and was reliant on the superintendent here. And it was, if we asked any question as a board, it was, no, the superintendent said this, this is from CSBA, right? And so that was a challenge. Um, I think Antonio and I had a couple of policies passed last year, and, and I can say for myself, I started slow, just kind of tiptoe in, like, right? Which is, uh, when I think about it, super, it was strategic, but it's also unhealthy, because that is our job. Like, we don't have to wait on CSBA to give us a policy to say, we need to do this. Like, when I think about our, our, um, requirements for graduation, for example, I'm like, I don't think we have a policy, and I've read, 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 that they need to be A through G, right? Now, the board might decide not to do that, I don't know what our value is around that. When I think of preparing kids for what we all say we want, we need to have standards for student graduation, right? Whether you decide to go to college or not, we're gonna prepare you.
Right.
But we do a lot of tracking here, and a lot of public schools do, but it's unfortunate, because it, it really hurts the most vulnerable students, right? And so I think having a policy committee would, we, it is, really shouldn't be an option.
And again, CSBA is only required to keep your compliance from what the federal government or state, that's it. How you want to operate in this district, it is the board's responsibility. So yeah, you take, those are easy ones. All you do is, what, you're gonna think that they're gonna tell you something wrong? So those are easy to do. But sometimes the district was like, check, that's, we're checking the box, we did our policy, no, no, no. Until you get called up where a community person will check some policies and like, well, a real incident where a teacher decided to take the devices from students, because they didn't want them. But kids today, you better find a way to incorporate that, because everything is there. They're not gonna read the Webster dictionary, they're probably like, what is a Webster dictionary? Google everything. So the parent went online, looked at the policy, pulled up the policy, it had not been updated in years. So the policy about technology said, age, I'm gonna tell you my age here, no pagers. Do you think these kids know, what, what does that mean?
Yeah, they're like, what is a pager?
Exactly, right.
What is a pager?
Right, a big energy. So again, summon the board, not look at technology. So the parent pulled that and put, and it was embarrassing. Cause now you have the teacher saying, no technology, no phones are allowed in the classroom. The parent's like, where does that say that? So that board had to hurry up and clear that one up. But this is where you do, those are real incidents that happen, and the board, and today you have to make it broad enough to say technology, current technology, because we don't know what the technology is gonna be in five, ten years, two years. So again, things that kids, how kids are learning, and this is where the experts who are in the classroom, the teachers are gonna say, look, I found a way to use your devices. So you just have to make sure that they're protected, uh, with this policy to be able to do that. If someone brings you one, you didn't say anything about tablets or iPads, so I'm bringing it. So you have to be broad enough, but this just shows where, when you don't pay attention to the, what you're responsible for. All it's gonna take is a parent to bring that up. So it became a really serious situation where, you know, the teacher felt it was total embarrassment, because you try to reprimand students for bringing it in, and it doesn't, the policy does not say that. So again, it's the board's job. But that's just something to put on the list of things that you have to do going forward. Um, usually the district administrators, they have their own, um, committees, too. That board members can be a part of, but I ain't talking about board policy, that it goes the other way. The administrator, the superintendent will send their expert to participate in that. And it is really what the will of the board wants, so any issues start with the board as a whole, then it goes to committee. Some boards were doing it wrong, where any issue skipped the whole board, went right to committee. So now you have two, well, this is a board of seven, so you had three, um, board members that had a lot of information, had more information than other board members. And that's what you can't do. All board members get the same information. So that's why it starts with the board, and the board decides if that should go to committee. But I have a whole structure on how to do that, and I'm pretty sure CSBA has some information, but I can drop that in. But that is something that you definitely should consider, um, cause policymakers, when you talk about policy, and then you talk about death of diets. We're gonna look at policy, the duck, the duck, cause it aligns with what? Right? Cause policy drives. It helps the staff understand what the work we have to do, because the board said so. It's a policy in place, there's no debate on that. It's a policy that says you have to do X, Y, Z, engage with students, and they can do the how, but the board is saying, this is our expectation, we're setting the culture. When you mentioned it even about the culture and climate has def, has changed, but this board, this, what is gonna be your legacy? Bringing in a new superintendent, what is gonna be the legacy of this team in changing the culture of this district? And being transparent about it, um, acknowledging some wrongs, acknowledging some harm that was done. All of that is important to go forward. But say, this is the team, because we're going to, we have to let it be, be on our shoulders. We have to bear the weight of, because we're the team now, so it's ours. You can't say, well, back then, they used to know, it belongs to you. So what's gonna be the legacy of this team to change the culture? Cause once it's changed at the top, it filters down. Then there would be an expectation at the superintendent's level to say, look, this is the culture that this board is. So they're expecting me to make sure this happens, so then you start impacting at the building level. And that's what it looks, and it takes time. But if the board is consistently modeling it up there, and being transparent about it, you talk about it consistently, it's not, again, it's not an option. This is the culture that we're trying to, to create, because number one, we want people to be attracted to come to our district. We want to retain a phenomenal staff that's here. We want to keep our students, we want to make sure that we educate them, when they leave here, that they are successful in whatever they choose to do. And that has to be in the forefront every time. What am I doing if I tell people that? Is it just a tagline? Or do they know this when they see us? They know this. If I were to ask you, what was your thirty second elevator speech that you would say? Anybody, any stranger coming up to ask you about AUSD, what would be your thirty second elevator speech? Ready, set, go. I won't do that to you. But think about it, by the next session, I may do that. What is your thirty second elevator speech? Cause sometimes all you hear about what the negative things are. And remember, that's one perspective. It's important what the community says, because that's their experience, but always letting them know that's a piece of the huge puzzle. So we'll take it and we'll put it on the table as revealed in the whole puzzle. Well, what, how would you counter that? That's why, if they say a thirty second elevator speech, so the next time you go in the elevator, you count. A time that you stand there when everybody's nervous, nobody's looking at each other, and that door closes. By the time it opens up again, it's about thirty seconds that go by. What could you have said to someone within thirty seconds to get them to want to stay here, want to come here? All of that. So you should be a walking marquee, you know, for this district, and I know you're in the midst of everything, but you're gonna get there. You have ideas of what you want. How do I put that in a thirty second elevator speech that people will say, yeah, you know, that's right? I know we have these challenges over here, but the challenge is, is not just a reflection of who we are every day. We have phenomenal staff who care about children, and this is what you see if this happens. So it's always good to have a thirty second elevator speech in your pocket, you just never know.
I'll have a thirty second speech.
You're almost, are you ready to give it one?
I know we're not over, it's not the end, but I just wanted just to pause and say thank you. Thank you for this.
Yeah, you're welcome. Of course, you don't get time to do this. As a last of my check, I don't ever see anybody having conversations like this. So thank yourselves for saying yes, to, because you have to invest in your own learning. And this is why I love to do what I do, because boards don't get a chance to do this. You're just, the night, right when you were elected, your first board meeting, they expected you to know everything about this district. And they look at it like, well, why don't you? And you're the board president, why don't you know? What? On the job, this is truly on the job training. On the job, and Jay, how long have you been here? How many years on the board?
Two, and a half.
Two and a half? Who, how many?
Uh, like five now.
Okay, five, and you're the veteran, you're the, our historian.
Yeah, but that's the problem.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
It's a problem.
Okay, say, tell us more, tell us more.
You're at a different stages of education. I went at one stage from nineteen seventy, nineteen sixty to eighty-six. That stage was a different stage. I come back, and it was a whole new ballgame. I had to relearn. And even so, we didn't, when I came in, we didn't get any of this board governance training. And we never worked as a team.
Yeah.
We honored each other, but we didn't work as a team.
Yeah, that's what it makes us tough.
And I only knew what I knew from the time before. And I had to carry that with me, and I had children in the school system, so it was a principle.
Well, now, what you.
There was a principle, which was not easy.
To think about, because you've had so many iterations of not only education, but of board members, of superintendents. And so it's like, what have I learned? And so you will only, be the only one to be able to put something, an experience like that on the table, compared to other board members. Because sometimes we, well, we don't know what we don't know, or we forget just ten, twenty years ago, what it was like in this space. It's different, and we can't even, I don't know, we can imagine what it's gonna be just in five years. What is, because we know we have entities out there that don't value board members, I hope you guys know that.
Oh, yeah.
And in some states, it's, it's very prevalent. I've worked in thirteen states total, and it's very prevalent, that there are groups who want to get rid of boards of education, because they think you are, uh, in the way. Uh, it's like, get rid of you and just let the parents tell the superintendent and staff what to do, because it's my job. But can you imagine if everyone just had their own way? That's not, that's not a good system, you know? But there are, you know, I don't believe that will ever come to a point where they abolish, I would hope not. But a lot of people are watching behaviors of board members, and they will use that to say, see? See what they're doing, or see, they can't keep a superintendent because of their behavior. There has been a, a very big district that was pretty much taken over, and it was because of board behavior. Fighting and fighting, just unbelievable.
In California?
No, no. Cause I will say this, because they ran nowhere, but it's, it's public knowledge, but it's unfortunate that it was because of board behavior and not like academics or financial. It was behavior. And I have engaged with quite a few of them, that I'm like, hey, can I make a phone call to the state and say, some maybe should have been, because it, they were harming the children. And so as long as board members are saying, okay, help us learn, because again, it's not required that you know any of this, which I don't understand that. Even when I was at the state level, I would always say, can we teach, can, can we have sessions for candidates? Who think they want to do this? Our members like, no, no ma'am, you're not gonna train somebody who's gonna run against me. And I'm like, what is, you want people to be able to say, you know what? That's not what I thought the job was. Because you end up getting it and like, I can't hire your teacher, or I can't fire a teacher, or principal, or the coach, but no, 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 and no. But you don't know till, now you're already on the board.
Some people run on that.
They do, they make those promises, there you go.
They run on those promises, like, you can't do that.
And that's why I say, that's why they need training, cause they would know, but won't they? You, they have to use another approach, and you can do so much damage there. And I have coached some board members on, in a very respectful way, and they, they're like, I, I can advocate on the other side? Like, absolutely, because what you're trying to do up here is not working. You have four other people you have to work with. And so that's what governing is all about, understanding that number one, we all have a right to be here. Number two, we have different experiences, and we want to do what's best. We may have different ideas of how to do it, but as we talk about it, cause sometimes your how needs to be aligned with budget, that it needs to be aligned with capacity, and if sometimes it's not no, it's a not now type of answer. Not now, but is, if we can do that in the future, but we just can't right now. But you won't know that if you don't take time to kind of talk to each other and kind of get through, through that. That's what true govern, you don't know it. And that's why I enjoy being in this space, just cause I do believe, I'm a strong believer that every board member can learn how to govern collectively. Absolutely, absolutely. So thank you for sharing about that movie, and when I, I will give you a copy of the PowerPoint, I'll put the link in there. All you gotta do is click on it if you want to look at it, yeah, I will always share afterwards. Okay, so when we talk about working as a team and governance best practices, which is how I always talk through, just really knowing, um, about, um, are you familiar with the Governance Core book? One of my favorite books, yes? Favorite books, as you can tell, and the new one just came out. This is probably the best book, reader-friendly, excellent book for school board members. Really tells you what your role is, what the role of the board is. So have you guys studied it as a team at all?
Is that what that CSBA was recommending?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they do. And when I, I met, um, I had, I had already known Michael Fulham, but I met Davis Campbell, that's one of CSBA's, and I'm like, oh my gosh, he signed, and signing the autograph and everything, and I like told him what I was doing with his book. I said, I actually trained boards on that book, and it has a workbook with it. I said, I actually trained boards on that book, and it has a workbook with it. And I really engaged with what use a real scenario, so what's happening in your district on how you go about addressing issue. So it's definitely something to look forward to in the future. So governance is steering the ship, just understanding that, and management is rowing. So visually, you know, the big steering wheel, now you guys have five sets of hands. This is where the hard part is, trying to figure out how are we steering this big ship? That means that the whole board needs to come come to some consensus on how are we steering? Are we jerking it this way, jerking it this way? Because that's interfering with the management rowing. They they got the two rows, they're rowing. But if the ship is being shifted, again, the movement is causing them to maybe go in circle. So that's why it makes sense to make sure that the board is on the same page. Once you have discussion, you may start out as a three, two, four, one, or whatever. But if when you have a discussion, say what's best for this district? Not what's best for me or my children, um, if it's, if I'm making decision decisions based on my children who happen to be in the district. That's going to benefit all children. That, that's a plus, but it's not about any specific individual, what's good for the whole. So just remember that the governance team, you steer the ship, okay? Uh, governance is the process where the direction of the district is set, that's your vision and mission. Usually everybody is, well, the vision and mission statement, they were put together a long time ago, okay? Which one of the vision and mission can you change, or should you look at periodically? Which one, vision or the mission?
Vision is the steering of the ship.
Vision will change of how we're getting there. Mission is pretty much gonna be the same. You have a lot of flowery words there, but it's really you're gonna educate children. That's the mission of public education. It's the vision that should be looked at to see, are we still, is this truly who we are? And even as you're going through this um suit process, I'm sure everyone's looking at, what is the vision of this district? And when was the last time it was updated? Because if there's nothing in there that talks about inequities. And me, me and children and dealing with the demographics of this district, it has been updated well. So the good thing is when you go through a strategic plan, guess what you look at? That's the first thing you look at, because that vision statement is gonna tell people who we are, as far as how we're gonna get there. And so that would be a way that at some point of when you get there, it's like, yeah, what is the the vision of it? What are we trying to say? That's aligned with our, we're saying it with our strategic plan, but it needs to be one statement to let people know, this is the. They, that's why they talk about this, cause this is the vision of this district. So you see how the strategic, I'm always gonna make those connections? It makes sense, but if your job is to set the direction, that's all you have to do it, okay? And it can't be a vision that's twenty years ago. The structure of the staff, the structure in this regard is your superintendent. You are hiring the right education expert to do what you expect them to do to move this district forward, okay? That accountability, you had two of you, um, talk about accountable and accountability, both fiscally and programmatically. So you need to be during budget time, asking those questions. We know the board does not create the budget, it's administratively done, but you better know enough about that, cause you have to approve it. So if you don't know enough about it, and you say yes to it, and then you find out, oh, and I know you guys aren't in this position, but this happens. We end up being deficit spending, because we were just thinking we had money because the board didn't pay attention. When that happens and you have to explain that to the community, they are not gonna go look at the superintendent or your C D O, they don't look at the board. Because you approved it. Cause the superintendent and staff's job is to do what the board says based upon its approval. So that's why it's important to um really make make sure of that. And the program, you won't know if they're working, if you're not asking any questions about them. Like when was the last time you made a large purchase on a program? And then what are your metrics to make sure, if someone say, how's it working, what would you be able to tell them? So if you're paying a half a million dollars for a literacy program, for a million dollars, and you don't know if it's working? That's on the board. Cause you wanna make her, cause it could be halfway through, you may have to pivot. Because the ones utilizing that program like, oh, we thought this was gonna work, but based upon us actually doing it. And again, without in being, feeling like they're gonna be um, that's a punitive thing. They're just saying, hey, we missed the mark. But we're letting you know, board, but once they tell you, we're missing the mark, do know they're gonna have a plan, they're like, this is what we can do, we can pivot. We can pull these resources, we have some really strong leaders in this building, we're gonna come together and do, that's what it looks like. At the end of the day, the board wants to make sure that you got these kids from here to here, through this program since we're paying for it. You know, and you have to allow time for it to see if it's successful. And I've said this already, the what, and I always say, board members can ask any questions they want. Through what? And not saying, how are you doing this superintendent? Well, okay, if I know there is a problem. What process are you using, or what information are you gathering to get to this superintendent? Cause you already know what the issue is, but you phrase everything in what, that's why you can ask any question you want to. And it goes below, what I'm gonna show you is um called the dotted line. That clock, you will never look at a clock the same after this. This will even help community people understand what the role of the board is. And as you can see, it's circular, this is not a cul-de-sac, you cannot get off it. You turn around and go the other way, you, this is continuous. Board of adopting the vision and goals, you start at the top. And then again, adopting policy, which is saying, okay, this is what we wanna do. Push it down below that line, that dotted line to the superintendent and staff, superintendent is going to interpret. What the board is saying through policy, really put it in in layman's terms to a staff like, look at here, look at here. This is what the board gonna hold me accountable for, this is what I need you to do. After the policy, then it's going to be implemented. Okay, people seeing if it's working, then the evaluation's gonna happen. Then it's gonna come back up to the board to say, okay, well, outcomes, is it working? That's where is, is it working comes from, and then you just continue. But knowing that the board is the third authorities at the top, that's what I was saying to you, how you're looking down ten thousand foot view. That's where your authority, so if the board is not doing the job up there. Then you remember when people would say, your chicken running with the head cut off, that's what it it looks like. With a district, if the leadership, the the board of education is not doing their job. It's not an option, you took an oath of office to do this. So you have to, you're a board authority and oversight and manage, that's what you're responsible for, you have to know enough about every wheel. To see if this is squeaking over here, okay superintendent, what's going on over here, we need to put some oil over here, we're not trying to throw it away. Something's going on over there, that's what it looks like, okay? And the community is on all of the outside, they're watching this. They want input, when it's time to give input on something, when you have policies, they they tell you if they like it or not. But the end of the day, the board makes the decision, with any decision, you're going through that now, what do they want in the superintendent, they're letting you know. End of the day, the board makes that decision, but you have to have input, same with student voice. When you do get your student representative, just having clear um definition of what the expectation is for a student rep. So, and sometimes I see boards using them only to report out about activities. I think that's such a waste, because if they're doing this, they're telling you, they might wanna be in politics. So how are you prepping them? Give them a little bit more than that. And and when I, I'll give you some information about one particular district that is actually doing it well, the student rep. I forget that that he's not a board member, the way he engages and, um, and they still vote, but they vote other kind, but they are so much a part of it. So this is what it looks like, oversight, superintendent, and when I say it's a dotted line, this is what I said, superintendent teaches up to the board of education. Because you don't know the day, day to day operations of what's going on. That's why it's the responsibility superintendent to teach up. Then the board being that conduit between the district and the community, superintendent is teaching up to us, now I can say yes to the community. That's what it looks like in action, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, just, I don't know if uh if you're gonna come back to the student board member, otherwise I wanted to share something.
I will, I I will, no, do it right now, cause it's a good place, I wanna show you an example, so, go ahead.
No, no, I just really appreciate that, and I know we we talked at the last meeting about having a student board member, and what you're saying, and so. Uh, I think we're gonna do work to, um, there's board policy on it, but. Even if uh if we wanna have representation between now and the end of the year, the board can. Appoint a a student board member when there's a vacancy, and right now there's a vacancy, cause there hasn't been one. But I appreciate your your point of, they can have a really powerful role if guided, you know, so. Uh, so I'm looking at at Maya, because when I think about best practice has been that the office of the superintendent and the board. Can help the board, the student board members understand their role and how to contribute, cause I will say, you're very, you're very right. And it's not done with any ill intent, but the schools will prep the board, the student board member to report out all the wonderful things happening at the school. But the board, the student board member needs to learn, what are the policies? You know, for talking about high school graduation, but it's your perspective, they need to get a little prepared on what's coming to the board meeting, so that. The superintendent and board office can help a student board member with that, I think that's that's really.
And I appreciate you saying that, cause even when I would do trainings like this, if the district had uh board reps, uh student rep, they came with training. Because they really wanna understand, and they do want to talk about. Cause their job really is to go back and find out, you know, boots on the ground, what do the kids really feel about this? We don't have to, as adults, make all the decisions, ask the students, cause we don't know, we're trying to do the best we can. And after a while, they're like, look, y'all move out the way, let us tell you what we need, what works for us. And you have to allow that to happen, so this is a good place where I I pulled, and it's a lot of work, I hope you know that, to get them prepped. It's not just re appointing, if you wanna do it in the right way. It's not just appointing someone who's good in an area, you you're aware, you're aware of that, right?
Right, I mean, like, if we're up here needing all this training, like, our students are gonna need training and support to like be board members.
Yeah, and they go to C S B A, cause I think they even have a session, I believe. So you have to really invest in this, so this is Valeo. And I've trained Valeo for several years, their board members are just. Sometimes they make the board members just like, you know what? And they roll back something as far as how they approach something they like, cause they didn't have that perspective. And I don't know if you can see this, but when it talks about, um, there's a lot that goes into. There's a petition that they have to sign, I guess you can determine how many signatures and all that, but it is a. It's a privilege to serve, you don't just put anyone in there, it's a privilege, so you have them go through the motions of getting support. From the student body, because that person is representing, just like you got support to run. And so Valeo has a, and this is their policy, they have a policy in place, and I think, like, when you mentioned that there is, or there's a policy. And so this board, you have had them in the past, right, or you?
No, so I wrote that, I wrote that policy.
Oh, in order to get a su- oh.
And then we just had administrative barriers to making that happen.
Okay, well, you know, I might have to, for what the board wants. Okay, I'm just trying to get an understanding here.
Yeah.
I know, I appreciate you saying that, yeah, go ahead, Mary.
We had pause, we had board members.
Student board.
Student board, a long time ago. Don Frey is is an example, he's city council right now, but he wasn't when he was a high school student. That was during the time that Jordan Motte Senior was around. Along the process after I left, things changed. And I don't know where they were dropped or what happened, and then when we tried to get them back in. There was this whole issue about, well, we have all these schools that we have to deal with, how are we gonna get the the policy? That you put together, how are we gonna get the votes for them to get in? And then before that, a little politics was going on, because two of the board members wanted a particular person. For the simple reason they wanted the third vote.
Well, well. Administration is very supportive of that.
It would be time, so this one, I I would say, since you have a policy, I'm gonna share it, put this in a folder, and just share, kinda compare. And see if there's some things that you should pick up, because it is important to make sure that there is a process and that. You know, I'm always floored when the board will say, staff is pushing back, we're the boss, now this is where sometimes you have to remind people. That the board of education is the boss, and that there shouldn't be barriers of not of having student rep. Unless they're saying a particular person, but you, the concept of having. A board of student representation, I don't know why there would be a pushback unless there's some history.
Especially when the person has the support. Yeah, they, that this person had student support, gear valley, and antioch, so yeah.
So there there's some layers. Right, but there's some layers there that the board would have to unpack, there's something else going on, I think you kinda threw it out there, I saw you. I tried to move away when you threw that ball out there, I heard what you said, Mary.
More to it.
I know, go ahead.
I don't know, you know, Tony, you can tell me if our board policy for student board member has a process, does it have a process? Or is it a doubt by saying we want it?
It 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 has like a good chunk of pride, it's very, what I'm reading here is very similar, I mean, I. I dealt a lot of what like C S B A and other uh nearby school districts had already on their stuff.
And even the board training.
Yeah.
Alternative, alternative.
I always wondered, well, I knew that not having a student board member was political for us, whatever.
Okay.
And, cause, um, for for whatever reason, I don't know the history of it, I just know that, like Antonio said, there was some. Um, it it was just not done. But also I think, I know that we didn't have the support of the whole board.
Yeah.
We did, and we said, then we, it would have happened. So I think it was just a couple of us pushing and then we knew it wasn't gonna happen under.
And timing is everything, so what is a perfect time? You come up, have a new, have a superintendent in place, you're gonna have potentially a strategic plan, you want student voice. Perfect time to do that, and then this is again where you have to, you know, I I'll find this, um. I usually show this one, the um slide that shows you s- a rear, uh, windshield. The rearview mirror, okay? There are so many possibilities looking through the windshield. But what we tend to do is look at that rearview mirror, do what we do, oh, what we did, uh, yeah, the rearview mirror is to remind you of. Some things that perhaps didn't work out, remind you of less, some lessons learned. But if you think you can drive fifty miles an hour, only looking your rearview mirror, you try that, but do it in an open field, don't do it where you're into anybody. We have to focus on, you know, that rearview mirror, but looking at the the possibilities. And then when you have your new journey of whoever you select as your superintendent, it's the possibilities of. What's beyond, what's beyond that horizon? We can do what we want, this is the board, you make your decisions, there's no more, well, we don't wanna do it because we've always, no, we're, that doesn't fly here. We're not gonna do that a- at all, and so. This was just, this is a good example, so I will share with you to see what you have in there, Antonio already. And um go from there, um, to see, because it is a process, and you wanna make sure that you have the right person. And they understand that they are a participating, or they are trustee, they even get dressed that way, they go to the conference. They vote, but they know it doesn't count, but you wanna hear their voices. So it's not just, well, just come, cause those boards that use them just to report, they come, report, and then they leave. You want someone to commit to it, because there is a learning process for them to, and then there are other times, like how many high schools do you have?
Three, three kind of alternatives, and then like three alternative.
Right, so we even went to high school, people, what how, what do we, we don't know about what's going on in the high school, well, there's other ways you could find out activities. Usually a superintendent has a weekly update, or there's something that goes out. Or you can have a student just come to the mic every once a month, and just say, it doesn't have to be your board rep. That's all I'm saying, making sure that they're committed to to that, so. When we're going back to what good governance is, these are research-based traits that if you practice these traits. It equates to an effective team, an effective work that the board does with, you know, in in the district. So you commit to that vision of high expectations of student achievement and the quality of instruction. You don't select the instruction, but if the board sets it high. Staff should not bring you anything that's not gonna get you to where the board wants to be. That's how you're involved in something that's below the line, okay? That strong, share strong beliefs and values about what's possible for students. Not again, my own personal values is not that, but believe in every child, you know, every people used to make the comment all the time. Oh, all kids can learn, da da da, do you really believe that, cause some people have shown that they don't even believe it. So, but this is where the board has to say, anything that comes before us, we wanna make sure that you believe in children. So even if there's language that perhaps, I'm just gonna say this. Sometimes there's behavior, practices, and systems that just don't promote student success. And we have to stop doing it. that just don't promote student success, and we have to stop doing it, period. Again, this is where it's not personal. We, the language, some be, some, um, engagement, some, um, again, the language that's used and has been acceptable. Sometimes you have to be reminded that, mm-mm, we don't do, we don't do that here. That's not the culture we're trying to create, it's kinda, i- i- is, is going contrary to everything we're trying to do. So sometimes those things that you know are going on in this district that you haven't been on, just like for the last ten years, may need to come to a stop. And this is where you have to say to your superintendent, we're not tolerating this. That's your job to handle, your staff, but this is where we wanna keep everybody. Go ahead, Chad.
I'm wondering, because I, I think we could all, or most of us agree with what you're saying, when do we have those conversations, right? Because we individually might see stuff or patterns across the system, we have audits, we have, we have loss, and we have all these reports, and we have, you know, we can look at just the state test boards, like, we have so much information, but it's like, when do we actually sit and talk about it? So that it's not like one-offs, like, you know, over my V on the dais and saying, well, this is happening, I'm saying this, and she's like, you see them, like, how do we make it cohesive?
Right, so after, other than your board meetings, do you have scheduled workshops? And that's what, or study sessions? And I'm not talking about like this, this is your retreat. Study sessions is when you have conversations like that, because it's a topic that you know you need to take a deeper dive into. That's when you schedule a, a study session, usually like two hours. I would say, try to keep one item, it's still agendaized, one topic on, and then the superintendent will note that the staff that can give you all the information goes to that study session. So if you know certain things are happening, again, once you get your, your goals and your, all of that aligned, you will see where it falls. You have those discussions in a work session, to say, we need to dig deeper, and then once you talk about in the work sessions, you're not making any decisions, then the, the topic summarized comes back to the dais. Because now you're educating people to say, look, we've been talking about this, we've had some great conversations in our work sessions, and these are the things that we plan to do. Because that's action up here.
And, and we were getting into the practice, like, the most recent example that we did is with our budget, like, our recent budget discussion, we had like a discussion, no decision. It was just like, let's get an overview of this, and then we had like the actual approval.
Thank you, do that for all these other topics. If you practice that, because you're right, you're right, you're doing that, use that, but sometimes we stop and only do a thing. No, you can do that with any other topic that you want a deeper dive in. You practice the same thing, have that discussion, and then bring it back to the dais.
It was important to have study sessions before, and when I came back, it was eliminated during my time. Uh, and now, and we, and I gotta try to bring it up with special ed. I thought we would have a study session, I kept asking, you and I agreed that we should have something, but instead, we sent it into a committee.
And to me, again, the board makes a decision, if it's such a, it's a bigger issue that you have to, you really need more time to really think about, because say, three months down the road, you have to make a decision. You want to be prepared, because once you get up here, you have to take action, and being at the dais during your board meetings is not the time to have those deep discussions. You need to have that prior to. So just, and a lot of boards do have, on special ed, because that has always been a challenging topic. And not that we're going to get it right all the time, but if you don't talk about some things that are specifically happening here, to say whether, mm, we need to pay attention to that, or we need to stop doing that, or whatever, you can't make the best decision by the time something gets on the agenda, where it's already going to be tugging at your heart about it. You know, just the topic itself, and then it becomes too emotionally attached, trying to make the decision, but you have to do your due diligence. Those work sessions are priceless. And I'm not saying you have to have one every month, but if you have a governance calendar to kinda look at, there are certain things that you must talk about at certain times of the year, certain things that come up that you have to make a decision on. You can say every two months or every quarter, you can start, every quarter, we're gonna have a, a deep diet study session on these high level, and it's usually aligned with your, I'll go back to your strategic plan. Because academic achievement, special ed isn't gonna go under there, curriculum, things that you have issues. So that's why it's easy, once you get to that point, which you're going to, then it'd be easier to say, based upon all of the items that are high level for us that fall under this category, that's what we're, we're gonna have a study session on this. That will also, because it's, it's agendaized, so the community can come if they want, that's when they really find out what's going on in the district, not come in here at your board meetings.
And just to, um, affirm what you're saying, um, I think we could do both. So because we are in such a desperate state with special education in our district, I believe we made the decision to have a, um, a sped committee of the board. And I also believe what they learn, if they can bring it back into a study session with staff.
Yes.
Then we will then be able to get caught up, because, like, I'm already co-chairing a, a committee, right? I don't have time to do both, and most of us don't, because we have other work and all of that. So I think we can still make a really nice structure, so that the three of us can be really involved, because, um, yeah, because Dee and Olga are on the committee, so I think that we can still.
I don't disagree with the committee, I'm saying that they needed the study session when we were having so many parents coming up about special ed. That's when we said, we need a study session, but we never got to it. What got to it was the next thing, because we had two new board members, was a committee.
I actually think this direction is much more, is gonna be more, much more helpful, because the way we're leading out the committee is with a focus group, which will grasp more resources. And so it'll get vo- voices, like, we're looking at having admin in the groups, we're gonna have parents in the group, we're gonna have general ed teachers, special ed teachers. And so I, I just think we're gonna have, uh, just a broader understanding, and then we're also, Kelly's gonna work in some of the requirements that we have from the state. And then I, and I was just in, sitting here with, listening to you now, like, oh, Adam, I need to review our special ed.
Thank you. Yes, figure that out. But yeah, and then bring it back.
I agree with you, but that leaves us not having the understanding. See, unless I go to that meeting and sit there and listen, then that's the real.
But we are not making decisions.
No, it's not for making decisions, it's for understanding.
And it could be, and, and it could be, if you have a committee, just remember this piece, the other board members should know what you're doing in a committee. So at some point, maybe even before it goes to committee, it should be an understanding with this whole board. This, because you're really giving the committee mi- mi- members a charge to do.
Correct.
So this board needs to be very clear what you're going to be doing. So that's when collectively, on the dais you're talking about, the plan is to look at da, da, da. You don't just go there and complice, just looking at, no, you're given a directive to do certain things, and that's what you work on, and you bring it back, because you can't do all of it. So you wanna make sure that it's something you can handle, and then you bring it back as a recommendation sometimes to the board, and that's where you have more conversations, to see if the board members know. But at the beginning, all board members should know what the work is going to be in, and it happens to be special ed in that committee. So no board member should feel like they don't know what's going on. And I'm not saying it's intentional or anything, but just think of a process to make sure some of the ideas of what you said, oh, we need to bring in that. Just make sure your other colleagues know this, before you do, because all it's gonna take is someone else to pull their coat down, let them know what's going on, and they don't know what's going on. And we don't ever want that to happen, because again, it's not intentional, but I just want you to always think about, the whole board needs to be informed. You, you, you can't have more information than your other colleagues. And again, that's where we have to be intentional about, well, wait a minute, processes, do we make sure we let everybody know before we really go deep into it? So it's just a matter of understanding that and how you go about that process.
So this is, actually brings up a great point, because, like, that is, um, I, like, I know nothing about what's going on on the board committee. And Jag and I, we kinda were on the city, um, school committee, and we kinda decided impromptu, we're gonna move forward. So then what are you actually saying? Are you saying every single committee needs to sit down and have a discussion about what we're gonna do before?
Well, first of all, I will say, if you have committees, number one, do you have almost like a, I call it like a job description of what the committee is supposed to do? Okay, that's usually where board members don't have that. So there needs to be a template, just a simple template of what each committee's role is supposed to be. Because you are doing this on, on the half of the board. They are, the other board is, they're allowing you to do this. So there needs to be a template of what is the task? So the task is only what the board says, the board as a whole. The committee doesn't just do whatever they want, that's not how committees operate. So the first step is to make sure some, it can be a template to say, what are the top three responsible things we want the committee to focus on? And whatever, you guys decide what that is, and then that is all you do, and then you report back. Tom, yeah?
Okay, yeah, I was, Olga, so, like, I don't know personally what's going on with the board committee, I know that's nothing intentional, I don't know what goes on with the city.
City's, I report out.
No, no, I was gonna say that, unless she, like, reports out, who she does during our meeting, so like.
But is it a, is that a board committee? It is a board committee. And so, again, it sounds like you guys don't have that first step about the template, because you're gonna do what you think you're supposed to do, because of your area of expertise. Which doesn't mean that it's not in alignment with the board, but the board gives direction to what goes on in the committee, not committee people, you know, do what they want. And again, it's not intentional.
Our special ad hoc committee, we're supposed to sit.
No, we spoke at it, we spoke at it, uh, in the, in our meeting, we said we were going to improve communication and collabora- collaboration across sped, so. And that's why we're opening up with the listeners.
But who said, no?
I was gonna say, I just went, because she's saying we have to share it, so I'm being.
You voted, the whole board, okay, as long as the board voted. I'm just trying to make sure that is the will of the board of the work. I'll, it, it's not about intentionally trying to keep anybody out, it's about, the board collectively decides what is gonna be pushed to a committee. And then the board, in all fairness to the committee people, they want to be clear of what you expect us to do, because we don't wanna do all this work, and then you send it back to us, like, what'd you do all that for? We weren't interested in that. You don't want that to happen, so it's good to have clarity, and it's something you can practice, because you need to make sure you have clarity on what you want your new superintendent to do too. This is all clarity. Many superintendents say, I don't know what the board really wants, but I know what I'm supposed to do as superintendent. So they're, you're not, you not having clarity is not gonna stop the superintendent from doing the day-to-day. So this is a way to practice, the board needs to be clear, the whole board, you give them a directive, and then they go and do. That's what it looks like.
I think maybe I did present the question, so what I'm saying is, I know that we are going, like she said, it was expressed in the dais, on the dais. So maybe I hear you clearly, I just wanna get clarification, so when we have our next meeting, or are they, every meeting, are we supposed to then come back and off? And like, maybe in closed session, report back to them, this is what we did, and this is what the committee's doing, or just saying it when we're having an open meeting?
If it's not in closed session, it isn't open, and, and, any, no, anytime you have a committee, and they come back with a report, absolutely, that has to be done, at the, a report.
I know, I'm telling you, but nothing else, like, with them as well, like, hey, we're doing this, we added this to our ad hoc committee, once we start it, maybe we just have our committee.
Well, no, well, we have that section at the end of our agenda for reports from committees, or, um, or where that's where you're supposed to share.
Then I think that, that's what we do already, dummy.
Yeah.
I'm just trying, I'm just poking the bear with you guys, and make sure everybody knows, that's what I'm doing. See, uh, there you go, go ahead.
My issue was, I wanted to hear about special education in this district, of, uh, it was go- what was going on. As to the committee, that's fine, they're getting deeper into it. I want just a general explanation from the top people that are running it as to how they're doing it.
And then this is what you do as a board member, um, superintendent or board president, get it on the agenda.
I did ask for it.
No, you, did it get on the agenda?
No, it didn't get on the agenda, we've been talking about it.
Processing, again, you talk, only thing you can talk about up there is what's on the agenda. So the board members have to figure out, every, the PSA, every board member has a right to put something on the agenda, is whatever your process is. So it could be, as you're talking, well, we have all these things on the agenda, if you want a five-hour board meeting, we can do that. So it may not be on this one, but it could be on two months from now, or whatever.
We have a list.
You have a list, uh?
Yes, it's in our agenda every time. These are the things that we have each requested, and they tells us, well, this came on your, your Friday night, Friday day letter, and this came on this, and this is, we're gonna discuss it at that board meeting. Special ed hasn't come up.
And you're saying special ed, again, not until you somehow got lost. So you have one board member that keeps saying, so this is where, when you're listening to each other, how do I resolve that? It's like, okay, do we need, is we need it on the agenda, then that means staff, who are the experts, need to come. But then the board needs to know, what do you wanna know? Don't just say, I, there you go, don't say, well, I just want an update, because they're like, update, I got.
I should've said, I want a, um, what do you call it? Workshop.
I didn't see clarity, because I thought, I thought that committee, like, satisfied that for now.
That's actually what was said that night.
See, it's just clarity.
Yeah, that we were waiting on the, um, presentation until after the ad hoc committee, that's actually what was said.
So again, it's just clarity, yes.
Uh, you comment, it, it's a really productive conversation. I mean, first, I think you do have a lot of practices to build on. I agree, I think what was done with special education is what Deborah's referring to, where the purpose was set up clearly, and the timeline and outcome was set up as well. I think just to look in the rearview mirror for a moment, just coming in when that had been, it wasn't totally clear, um, just coming in from me, as staff, asking staff and board president, like, where are we going? It wasn't clear that there were kind of two separate requests, it was more like, what are we gonna do with special education? I think there was a sense that the committee addressed it. Now, the good thing is, we have September, in September, the committee will report out, that can be a time also to, to share that. And then, last thing, just, I wanna put that, uh, this out there, I wanna ask you a question, actually, and put it out there. Here's where I can see where there's a lack of clarity, now just having experienced it. They have an agenda item, which I don't, I've been curious to see what you think of this agenda item. It, it is future agenda items from board members. So the board president announces it, and at the last meeting, um, Olga said some, you know, said something, but like, nobody responded if they wanted that to be an item, so it's now, is staff supposed to go do that? And then also, just in terms of best practices, what this district didn't have, but we've instituted for the remainder of this year, was a governance calendar, that's another important.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and so like, the governance calendar now for the rest of the year is kind of, you know, we, we kinda got things settled. So when a board member says future agenda items, I guess the question I have is, should that be an agenda item, asking board members for future agenda items? Secondly, if a board member says it, should other board members comment, do they wanna see that? And third, what's staff role in saying, because you're right, in this area, they are the boss, but staff is also, has a lot of responsibilities.
They have the information, yeah.
Yeah, so what's staff role in saying, you know what, this would not be the time to talk about that. So I did, I just wanna throw out that.
That, that was good, but let me just say, because a lot of boards do put future, or they'll say board comments, however you word it.
They have both, that's the thing.
Um, the key thing is, if it's one person wanting it, that is, no, I'm sorry. That's where you better speak up, because this is where the board president or anyone else, is, is that a topic that we're all interested in? Because if it's not, I'm sorry, that's just you going to superintendent, like, hey, can you tell me a little bit more? It has to be the will of the board, so we don't ever wanna think that I can just talk about anything. And as a board member, if you want to say, we need to know more about, you have done your own homework and your thought process, it needs to be brought up, that it's a topic that's important to this district. It's important to move this district forward. It's not a topic that we just wanna talk about, because that's, you're here to conduct business, so you wanna think about that. So especially in, as always, so that should be something like, yeah, yeah, it could just be informing, well, yeah, that's a great, yeah, we do need to know more about. Then, your, your staff will know, okay, that means I need to be doing something. But then it's still, the su- the board president is still determining when it gets on the agenda. So just because you said yes to it, that doesn't mean the next board meeting is going to be there. But in the most reasonable timeframe, because again, if you look at all the things that you have to talk about, and unless you want a five or six-hour meeting, so that's where you, the board president knows that they said they want special ed. And don't get a whole list of twenty things, get the top three things that you, that's important to the district, not a list of twenty things that you wanna just know about. Again, some of these could be a conversation, some could be, uh, the Friday notes, hey, I'm answering your question. It needs to be high-level stuff that the board needs to know, that will help you eventually make some decisions when you're sitting at the dais.
Got it, okay, that's really good feedback, I think that's honestly like a left, leftover practice from previous, uh, you know, administrative leadership, who was often say that, like, say very little to avoid this sounding like another agenda item, and so it often was just like, list out these things, and then like, but that sounds much more like helpful. And so, thanks for calling that explicitly, because that, that is good feedback, and that allows me to not facilitate that better.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember that, there used to be a, a, a response from, from the administrator, saying, is that the three of you, all three of you wanna do that?
I, I don't fully remember that, ask, like, but maybe a little bit more, yeah.
And then if we all nodded our heads, then it would go forward.
Well, I've been telling you this right now, that's not up to the administrators, sorry, administrators, that's not, it's the board's decision to go forward, I hear you.
But for the three, she asking the three, if that's.
No, that's not appropriate.
One, then it wasn't gonna be done.
But the administrators stay out of this, totally out of this, it's the board's decision to, to have a discussion.
And the chair is the one that's supposed to ask this.
But I think it'll help us, Olga and I have had this conversation before, um, of passivity, right, and leadership.
There you go.
And I feel like, this board has a, has had a history, how many minutes have we been there, not very long though, a couple seconds. Like to say, has had a, a passiveness, has nothing to do with leadership, please know that. This is the culture, and this is something he and I have worked to try to overcome, is a culture of passivity, right? And so she might say something, oh, I wanna hear about this, and then I'll say something, he'll say, we all have something, and then we just walk away. And then the staff is confused, like, are we supposed to do that, or, and I know that, so the last couple times, I've been like, I haven't finished, I don't know. Cause like, what are they gonna do, unless we sit down, have our goals, have a strategic plan, and then those requests should be based on that.
Yes.
Or, it might not be, and someone might say, hey, this isn't a strategic plan, but I'm, this is coming down the pipe, like, we, can we really talk about this at the next board meeting? Or have a study session or whatever, but I feel like that contributes when we do that, each just say, oh, I wanna talk about this, I wanna talk about this. It can, it contributes to the passivity of our leadership, right, it's kinda like, oh, well, no one's gonna do anything, we just walk away, and that's weird.
Yeah, and I'm glad you put that out there, because the key thing is, it's something I want you to start practicing, the board, when I talk about board, your clarity. If staff is listening, if the board is not saying yes, do, that's the time, it's a directive to do, they're like. Okay, the board didn't tell us we had to do it, they wouldn't, cause they have a job to do every single day, it's not waiting to see what the board wants. So that's when the board is looking at it, looking at each other, when you're up there doing that, saying, is this something that we wanna go forward on? And you need to know for sure, whether you say, uh, vote or whatever. And, and the board president will say, okay, superintendent, da 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 da, this is what we wanna do, and there's an expectation of when it's gonna be on the agenda, da da da.
And just, um, as a, uh, my prior roles, just know, I'm sure Matt could have stories too, but. When you're sitting on that, on this side of the diocese, and the board keeps giving you more to do, and you already have a lot to do, it can be really stressful. So when we ask for presentations, it's like, I love the, we, we definitely need, uh, you know, once we get our permanent superintendent, like a year long. Uh, governance channel, cap calendar that we create with the superintendent, and in that have presentations, because we'll have benchmarks. We know if our focus is on literacy, then we have four a year, we don't have to ask them to do it, they know it's coming down the pipe, right?
That's the easy thing, again, it'll make it a little bit easier, when you guys get there, when you have goals. This time of year, there's certain times of year is best, because the data is available at certain times of year, so you wanna be strategic, that you know in March. This is what we're gonna talk, so if the staff is looking, they know, the board is gonna expect us to be ready in March, and then as it gets closer, it's gonna be a reminder. And then the board can be very specific, we need to know these three bullet points about this. Don't just bring us everything, because we don't need to know all that, so at least dropping it on the calendar. Align with the strategic plan, or, or the goals and all of that, and then the staff will be able to say, this is the time. And then, something you slipped in there, and I just want, I heard it, I wanna just remind you. You know, you said, if it doesn't align with the strategic plan, but we wanna talk about it, that's not, that's not a but, we wanna talk about it. You only talk about what has to do with district, and I'm saying it wasn't district business. What has to do with district business is aligned with your goals and your strategic plan, that is the only thing you talk about up there. Other than those things that by law, you know, you have to do. But the discussion, what makes your agenda, is aligned with the, the direction that this district is, is going. That's the discussion that this board is required to have every time you meet together.
So when I say that, I mean, um, so if we are a well-oiled machine, or when we become a well-oiled machine. Sometimes emergencies happen, and things you have to.
That you have to talk about, yeah, the unplanned, absolutely, and, and again, I'm glad you said it that way too, because board members know that. At that time when something just happened, you may not, that might be the only preparation you get, when you walking in there, and Maya's handing you, oh, by the way. And that's the only preparation you get, to sit there and read something, that's it, so we can't say, well, I just got this, I want, no. Because this just happened, and we have to make a decision today. And that's when you take, it's your meeting, so you can take as much time as you want, give me ten minutes to read, cause I need to read through, and that's what you do. But that's what, but those don't happen a lot, but I'm glad you said it that way, cause that can happen with boards. You own, your only time you get is when you're walking in, but superintendent got a call, that's like, look, the board's gotta do this. Or the staff's like, we missed the deadline, or the deadline is tomorrow, and we don't meet again until two weeks. That means the board's gotta make a decision, because there's penalties if we don't, so you do it reluctantly. After that, you're gonna find out where did we drop the ball, cause that should never happen again, that's how you remind, what do we, what, how do we miss this? And it could be because, oh, if we had a governance calendar, it wasn't on there, so staff wasn't paying attention, cause they doing all these hundred things. So this is how you support each other, cause you want everybody to be, um, successful, to make sure this district moves forward, that's what you wanna do. Okay?
Quick question, how do we, and you probably already guys already know the answers as a new person. How do we get more, uh, clarity or more information or questions when we are approached with expulsions returned? Because to me, it's more, it's also, here it is, it's in, you know, we discuss it, and then we vote out here. But like, if you have so many questions, and it's not just one or two questions, um, and then what is the follow up? Like, they're back into the school system, who's responsible to, is it one of the board members responsible to follow up, to see how that student is doing? Or is there a report?
And this is where, I think, cause you have to follow the law at this, okay, and usually if it's about expulsion, or someone losing their job, that is full of session. So you can't ask questions.
No, 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 not up there, I'm just saying, like, times, like, because sometimes it gets, you guys go to open session, cause we don't have enough time. To dive into questions.
Well, and depends on what your practice is, some boards, when they go in a closed session, they say, we'll be in closed session, sometimes you don't put an ending time, because sometimes you don't know. And then, the, when it's video, it's just an update, like, still in closed session for another half hour, whatever, you take the time you need, it's close, cause that's your business. You give people an idea, like, the first hour is closed session, a lot of districts do that, and sometimes, even if it doesn't take an hour, they take that hour. Because you can't start if you already told them an hour, so you guys have to determine. The, um, how much conversation is going to be needed on that topic, cause you know the topic, legal counsel can give you some guidance on that. Because you, that is the place where you ask questions, absolutely, you don't do that out here, so if, if you're feeling that. It's a time constraint, that we gotta hurry up and get back out here, but I, I'm walking out of a meeting, a closed session, not feeling like. I got enough input, or was able to have enough input, because I don't have enough information, that's something that you guys structurally have to adjust, to say. How long are your closed sessions, like, it's like, it's starting, just get an idea.
About an hour.
And is there so much on the agenda, do you adjust it if there's a lot you have to talk about?
Yeah, we've like started earlier, like five.
Cause that's where you have the flexibility, or you give time limits to everybody saying what they need to say, you don't want anyone to monopolize. So that's just a struggle, you guys figure out how that works, but if you have a colleague that's saying, I don't feel. Yeah, I'm in a good place when I walk out, that's something that as a board, you guys can talk about.
My question is like, is it a difference between like, this is information that you'd like to continue to get more information on? Or is it information that's going to affect our decision making when it comes to?
When you say our decision, it would be. It includes mine, but I may not still be ready to say, yeah, let them go back into school, right, so. But again, for this last, uh, our last, uh, session, we started at six, it wasn't a, uh, earlier one, but I think the other. Stuff that was on the agenda took a little bit more time, um, uh, this last, uh, meeting, so I don't think the timing wasn't.
Okay.
But make sure in that meeting, when it's happening, say something, in that meeting.
Yeah, cause I mean, the other option we always have is, we can always push, well, I guess we could be creative, but like, we can always do closed session after we get through a good chunk of like. Open sessions, then we can always return back to closed session at the end.
Can, yeah, you know, you can definitely do, and I see boards doing that, when it's, it's a heavy topic and you have to come back, um. Do you talk about that?
Um, I think part, I'm wondering, might not be true, but I'm wondering if part of what you're talking about. Um, is around process too, so not, so including. What we talk about in closed session around expulsion, stipulated expulsions, like all these things, like the process to get there. You may not be thinking that, I'm thinking this, right, like, cause we, so I think it's a broader conversation. Around our, how our district handles discipline, our, and our values around discipline, our values around social emotional learning. Our values around how we, um, uh, like, uh, discipline, right, so I'll give you an example. Uh, some districts use love and logic, so instead of suspending kids, there is a logical consequence that doesn't necessarily include suspensions or expulsions. Unless it's an egregious case, and a case that is mandated by law, that we have to at least have the expulsion hearing. Um, so I think there's so much conversation, so, because I think, for me, I've been in that place where you are, and I'm sitting in closed session going. What information do we have to make this decision, right, like, I'm not clear, and so as a board, we need to say, when you bring a, an ex- stipulated expulsion. Or an expulsion, you need to have this information, you need to have a history, does a student have an IEP? How many times have they been suspended, what supports have they been given, like, what we have implemented as a board. What we say is, they come in and say, well, we, we think so, we're the experts, and we're like, but, we don't have any more, like, that is a big decision to make.
But again, clarity from the board, because it may, just all the things you named, may exist, but the staff gotta ask for it. So, we gonna just put them through, because that's what we think.
I've just been.
Okay, I know, okay, 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 I'm just trying.
Let me just say, I've been trying to get information.
But that, that is key to be very clear, that's when you start unpacking, before they get here, before the expulsion, I wanna know what were the steps. And again, if the board is setting what the culture is, and how we're going to deal with discipline, what are your discipline policy? What did we say of what we were going to do, were we gonna do some, um, the, the, what is it, PB, PBIS?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we say these things, but that's whole step was skipped, they just brought them here, but again, if you're not making sure what's in your policy. To make sure staff looks at it, then you, they'll know, board is gonna expect us to give us answer this. And then you could be at a, a better place to say, now I understand why we're here, because of all these circumstances, they tried all of it. But if you don't know, you should push back, absolutely, push back.
Cause I'm gonna tell you, I'm, I just.
Just go ahead, then I'm gonna do this, this is perfect time.
It affe- it affects the life of a kid.
Oh, absolutely.
Know this, like, I know that you all have heard, of course, of the school prison pipeline, but it is so real, and we have high expulsion rates. And so I'm glad you brought that up, because I think we need to slow down as a board, and really think about, like, all of these, how are we impacting our kids? By the decisions that we're making, and some of them have to be, like, they, some, sometimes we have to expel. Um, but a lot of times, I would say seventy-five to eighty percent of the time, we don't, but we don't know what the district did before the kid got there, and that's the issue.
Right, and that's the key, that, that is key, uh, but again, clarity, and I think you'll start practicing it more when. So many things are just, um, um, certain right now, but you're gelling as a new team, all of that, so it will come together, but now you can see. All the stuff that you're responsible for, who got time to worry about anything else, who got time to worry about if two kindergartners got in a fight? All I wanna know is, does the discipline, do they, do they handle it through the discipline pro- um, policy? I don't need to know that these two kindergartners got into a fight, unless the parents come up there. So there is so much where, so, again, we're gonna continue to build on it, but what I want, always use the last forty-five minutes or so to go over. What your actual results are, so, uh, of this, and we'll continue to build, I don't just dump this on you and leave it, that's why it's, I'm scaffolding, and we're gonna build. But there's a lot of things I needed you to see, of who you're saying you are, okay? Uh, I have no idea who said what, I, I only have four responses, so you're gonna see a even, one person didn't get a chance to take it, so. Um, four, four responses, okay? So again, the, the question, the superintendent didn't see what the, um, questions were, and this is, what the board's perspective is. Uh, how this board operates, that's how you're supposed to be answered, it's not individual, okay? There are some areas that I'm concerned about though, and I highlighted some that have to do with the process you're going through right now, I just want you to be aware of. So there are twenty-seven questions and six, or I think seven categories, so board qualities. So just letting you know how this structure is, the coloring might be up, but I will, the top right is always, this is here, so it goes this way. Okay, weak, satisfactory, good, always up here first, okay, and this is the key. So, the board strives to focus all decisions on enhancing student experience, increasing student achievement. And providing the best educational outcomes, so, one person said it's weak, two says satisfactory, and one said good. Whenever it's colorful, just means you're not on the same page, that you don't all have the same perspective, okay? Um, so again, thinking about board qualities, do we focus our, our, our decision making, so. Some improvement needs to happen there, so again, you're going to get this, I'm gonna send this to you, so you can digest it a little more, we, we will talk about the areas. Next time I'm with you to what we can, cause we need to do something about it and have a plan, and that's all it is, getting a plan in place, okay? Is the board independent and open minded, and respects the decision of individual board members and administrators on various topics? The majority, you guys said is satisfactory or good. Satisfactory, of course, is in the middle, but that's saying, are you okay with being a C average, that's how I look at it, I want you to be good, okay? So there's some work there, about the board and superintendent relations, this is weak, remember we're starting here. Um, doesn't infringe on the superintendent's area, so that doesn't mean the current situation is talking about, you need to think about it big picture. Um, follows procedures as agreed upon, so there's some work to be done, so you have to be prepared that. Your engagement with your new superintendent, you have to be, pay attention to this, there is, uh, I always say the two lanes going down the highway, the boards and administrators. You're going in the same direction though, okay, so the, just, this is where the board sees itself, so, all red, remember? I said, now this, the board provides through policy, a clear set of expectations of performance and personal qualities. Um, against which the superintendent will be measured periodically, and that means, cause you don't have any goals. You, you evaluate a superintendent based upon the goals, not based upon how you feel about them, and you have to have policies in place. So this is an area that you know you have to work, that's not effective and weak. Okay, so you probably don't know, there's some, these are areas you can expect to pull up your sleeves and do some work in. When you, um, get to the place where you have a superintendent, and you can set goals, okay? Policy development, okay, that's not effective, has established a process for regular routine policy review, cause we don't have a policy committee. Which, that's something easily, you can decide to have, um, and so, not effective, to weak, to satisfactory. For a job that is one of those top roles of, of the board, this is some area of, of area where you have to do some work in. You adhere to policies when making decisions, uh, weak and satisfactory, so. If you're making a decision, how are you making a decision, based on what? If you're a policy entity, how are you making your decision, they have to be based on policies or your strategic plan, things of that nature, so again. Just areas we have to work, remember when I said colorful, look at that, none of y'all agree with anything though. Is accountability driven, was spending less time operation, remember the clock, that below the line, that's the operation. Um, issues and more focus on policies, there, there was one area, from the four or five areas. Um, so obviously it's some work to do collectively, and I think when you have your committee, your policy committee in place. And you look, you have your strategic plan, you have your priorities, cause that is how you, you maneuver through that, that's how you operate. Anything you do, you should be able to connect it to a board, a district priority, or goals, or, uh, strategic plan goals, okay? Vision and planning, the board keeps abreast of educational issues, and adopts annual goals, so, um, not effective, weak, satisfactory. So again, it's something that you have to work on, and the way you have to, how do you stay abreast of educational issues? How does this board do that? What do you guys do?
Like local or, or?
Educational, yeah, well, it can be local, educational, well, broadly, just say broadly, would, go to conferences, do you?
Yeah, we all like to CSB.
Go ahead.
I mean, I'm educated. So I'm, I'm a part of X and all that, but I don't know, but as a board, we have to do something.
Yeah, and if you're totally relying on administrators to give you all the information, you shouldn't.
It, it comes on our computer, cause we have CSBA information.
So you're getting, see, you're.
We're getting all these different ones.
But, but you know what, it's a struggle.
Glitz and all that.
Yeah, but you know what the challenge is, you gotta read all that stuff. I know it's tough, but again, we volunteered to do this, okay?
And can I?
Sure, go back, sure.
When we don't do that, then we, uh, allow the filter of someone else to tell us.
Yes.
Right, and I think it's important for us to read ourselves, engage ourselves, and listen to the administrators.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we, yeah, I just wanna be mindful.
That, that is absolute, or, or you would hear, not only administrator, it could be community people, the loudest voice. Now there, you think about who you never hear from. And if you don't have a mechanism of li- of trying to find out how they feel about the district, if you, if you only listen to people who come to your meetings. To tell you, whether they like what you're doing or not, that's not the, we don't wanna walk away thinking that that's how everybody in the community. Most community people are okay with what's going on, but if you don't intentionally find a way to go where they are. If there's an event, just pop up there and kinda, you know, they don't have time to come to your board meetings, they're lifing, you know? But if we don't make it a practice to try to figure out, let's go to where the voices we don't hear about. Whether it's demogra- demographically, ethically, wha- whatever, the board, that's you, one of your roles is to. Um, you know, that community engagement, that is your responsibility, not just a superintendent, it is the board's responsibility. Because you want them to be engaged with you way before you need them to vote for you again, cause some of them will tell you, that's the only time I see you. Every four years or whatever, you don't want that to happen. You regularly review and evaluates the district's progress towards its goal, well, you don't do that yet, cause you don't. Well, I, and while in the way, I'm not gonna let you off the hook here, because if you had a superintendent, well, you've always. Cause the law requires you have a superintendent, so whenever there's a superintendent in that position, how are you evaluating them? How was anyone, any superintendent able to stay in a district without being evaluated?
They weren't evaluated.
And that's on the board, and I'm not saying, and I know it's different board, but you do, you do know that that, that falls on you. Whatever happens in this district, now it belongs to you, but you can stop that practice to say, not this board, our legacy is going to be. And it's not personal, but it's just that if, just like in our day job, our bosses, unless you're boss, but you still. Probably answer to a board, uh, directors, if I'm paying you, I'm just gonna put it in a layover's term. Your work, you get paid, okay, just gonna leave that there, that's the expectation, that's simple. Kindergartner understands that, so the expectation is that you do the job you were hired to do. And if, but if I can't evaluate you, how do, how can I justify if you get raises? If I'm telling people that, yes, you're wonderful, but when I pull the data, kids, there is no movement, that's not acceptable. Because I, I train aspiring superintendents, I know, and then these are so, and I know some highly skilled. Superintendents who do it well, they have said, if you don't see change in the first three years, then board, you better start looking hard. It doesn't take that long, uh, this is what superintendents say, it doesn't take that long, and it could just be a matter of, oh, here's the plan. Number one, it may take me the first year or the second year, but tell me what the plan is. But if the board doesn't demand that, then you get what you get.
That was a hallelujah.
I know it was, I know it was, I do his, I also do my research on the district I work with. Um, commits to a vision and defines clear goals, again, through that, with your shared beliefs, like you see how all of this is connected. When you have the vision of where you want this district to go, you have goals aligned, it aligns with the teaching of all the children. And then you have your expectation that these children are going to leave here prepared for life. But if we're missing some of the key links in there, it's not gonna happen, I don't care how much you celebrate at graduation, they're not prepared. They're not gonna be ready. Fiscal management, the board engages actively in discussing, discussions of budget priorities. So, I have a not effective week and then good, so, what's going on there? What are you guys thinking? Uh, cause you're in your budget process right now, right, go ahead.
I probably was either a not effective or week, I don't remember which one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but part of it is, while I think we have a, we have sh- been shown that we have a pretty strong budget. We haven't connected it to priorities and goals, because we don't have it, and so, when I'm thinking about like a strategic plan or goals. Like, we should be able to say, our focus is on A, B, and C, and this is where, uh, funding is going towards that.
Absolutely.
Starting to make connections, and so we don't have that yet.
Right, right, and so, it's good that, I just want you guys to put it in the room to, to recognize that, cause what you don't want, again, because you're in this situation of. Of, um, getting ready to go through the, where you're going through a superintendent search, you wanna make sure that whoever you select. That that person doesn't come in and just do what I know how to do at super, I don't know, I'm experienced, I'm just, no, no, no. You're gonna do what the board wants you to do, number one, and I would say every superintendent will understand that, but it's what you see in action. Because the board is not clear, so yes, these are, you will, if, if I gave you this, which I do, I will give you this same one in a year. That's just part of the scope of work I do, there should be some changes, you know? Of where you feel the district is going, because you've already said some things you recognize, yep, yep, we know, we gotta be better than, so you know it. That is, it'd be so different if you just were in denial, like, no, no, I don't know why Antonio prob- he probably answered this, cause that's not us. But being in denial doesn't help, all right? Uh, the board ensures that school resources are effectively utilized. So, being colorful here, how do you know? How do you know? This stuff, you don't know, right, and the only way you know, you have to say, what questions are we going to ask? What question, and that, in my next session, I'll do with, I'm actually gonna tell you what, I will tell you the answer. There are certain questions board members should be asking, it's no secret. And staff will be able to, okay, they never asked, but yeah, I'll pull this, I'll pull this, here it is right here, but they never asked, so I gave them all this other stuff, go ahead.
Talked about it with the nurses, right, the fact that.
There you go.
Gonna answer whether or not that, nurses like, that's a school resource.
Yes, there you go.
Utilized towards our goals.
You guys had already told on yourself, and I knew that when I was gonna show you this, yes, this is what it'll look like, cause you don't, it's like. Guys, how do, we don't even know, cause did we ever ask that, and then we start assuming things too, right? Say personnel, so the board encourages professional growth and increased competency through attendance of education. So, it's satisfactory, good, so, so I'm assuming that you guys are in support of, of professional development for staff and all that, so that's not an issue. That's not ever a line item in the budget, you go like, oh, we're getting rid of that, you value that, and I'm sure the staff appreciates that. Okay, ensures that personnel policies provide clear guidance for employment, not effective. And then satisfactory, good, so, my question to you on here, if you only have one employee, how do you know this? Cause you should, but I'm just giving, trying to see, we ensure that personnel policies provide clear guidelines, what, what are clear guidelines? What is that one thing? In order to get a job, you have to have what, a job description, right? Even though the board doesn't write them, but the board better make sure they've been updated, they better be ten years old. And it's just a matter of, superintendent, what's the process that our HR department uses to update job descriptions? Cause if, as a board, we're saying we have expectations up here, but based upon this job description, we ain't gonna hire nobody, they're not gonna get there. But that's because the board is not looking at it, so again, it's a matter of just asking that question, what's the process to make sure? Because if we're saying, we're setting the bar high, we're not gonna get the quality, quick caliber individuals. That's board work, that's overseeing, making sure that everything is operating at the highest level.
And its values.
At values, yes.
Job descriptions are based on the value of the organization, right, and so, if you believe in equity, it should be throughout.
It should be throughout.
High achievement and scholarly students, that should be reflected in our job description.
Absolutely, m- most definitely, job description, and then again, there are policies to back it up. So it's not something that the board just making it up, no, we stand strong in this because we got a policy to back it up to say. How much we feel this is important, policy is stating that, we're not playing, we're telling you, this is a po- this is our expectation. And so, HR, whatever you have to do, you need some additional professional learning, you need to go talk to other districts to find out what these, what they are doing. You do what you need to do, because at the end of the day, this is what we expect, okay? Okay, now it's all in red here, so, ensures that an effective evaluation system is in use for all employees. Including the superintendent of schools, so you guys have not effective and weak and then satisfactory. So tell me what's going on here, what's, what's, what's the situation today with this district about evaluations?
We definitely don't have an evaluation system for the superintendent.
You do not, you do not have a tool? Is there a plan, oh, that makes me nervous, I'm sorry, I'm hyperventilating, clutching my pearls, okay? You do know you have to have one, cause this is not fair to any superintendent coming in, cause they gonna ask you, oh. Um, what's, what system are you gonna, how are you gonna evaluate me, they're gonna ask you that, how are you gonna answer that question? Well, so start thinking about that. You don't have to recreate the wheel, there's si- there are systems out there, there are, um, templates out there, the state association has something for superintendent. But you have to have a tool that's fair, and once you start utilizing it when you work with your superintendent, then you will have a conversation together. About what works based upon what's going on here, the law will remember that, but you have to have a system in place.
But also for our employees, I know, I, I'd imagine, I'm not gonna make any assumptions. Cabinet, for example, we approve three-year contracts, every, we do rolling three-year contracts for them, right? And, and, my last conversation with the board, and it's, something I brought up was, what are we approving for? Like, what is, what was the evaluation, how do we know that these folks are effective? And that we should be approving a contract for another year, right, and so it's, they're always on this three-year rolling cycle. And so, I'm not convinced or confident that we actually have an evaluation process that's strong for our cabinet, I could be wrong.
Hmm.
I don't know that, because the information has not been provided to us, all it is, is superintendent says, yes, every year, we need to extend their contract. And I'm looking at test scores, I'm looking at, and I'm going, why are we extending the contracts?
One word that I would say that the board should say, evidence.
Yes, yes.
Especially if you have a three-year, you, okay, if you have a three-year, but ev- but I'm not gonna wait and evaluate you every three, I wanna know every year, what's your evidence of success? Because there may be a time where someone's really off for whatever reason, how do we get them back? You invest in that person, cause we're not trying to just throw away anybody, but if there is a problem. Somebody, superintendent better, should be dealing with it, based upon what the board is not seeing, I don't see any evidence. So maybe I missed something, so report out about, this is how you get presentation, let me see where were we last year? Where are we now, and where are we trying to get to, what's the plan? That's how you see if there's that, again, it's not attacking people, but everyone needs to have some rationale if you're asking to be. Cause, to get another year.
But it starts from the top, like you said.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
And if we are the one over being contracted, and I, I just thought of this question right now, in this moment. Um, are, are we privy to the evaluation itself?
No, but there's, I remember I tell you.
Questions would we ask?
There are always ways for you to find out, okay, because no, you don't wanna, you don't, that's messy. You're, you only have one employee, so you know what is evaluation, or whatever your superintendent evaluation would be. There needs to be a level of trust and clarity from the board to the superintendent, when you're evaluating, or your staff is evaluating other staff people. This is what we expect, so if you tell us that they have all met that, I'm gonna believe you. Because if it, if they have not, it's going to show up, then that's where, when we say that the superintendent is being held accountable for all the staff people. That's where you deal with your superintendent.
So that we could see the tool they use, just not the.
You don't see their evaluation, cause you wanna make sure, does the tool meet where the board is saying, we're trying to get this district to. There's nothing wrong with seeing the tool, because is the tool twenty years old? Things have changed, there could be, and even some staff, or teachers or principals could say, hey, there's a phenomenal tool that, can we consider using it? But if, if it gets foo- foo-fooed away, it never gets to a place where the board would ever know that we tried to get a better one, because your board is never asking. So again, when you're engaging with your new superintendent, just sharing areas of, if you just look at your organizational chart. And just pull, again, we're not talking about people, we're talking about departments. What's the process to know that this department curriculum is getting us to where we need to be? What's the process? In that process, are we meeting our goal? So whatever they put together for you, it needs to address that, don't tell me all that other stuff. I'm saying, what's the process, how does it meet the goals that we are gonna hold the superintendent accountable for, I don't wanna hear all the other stuff. But that's, sounds like that's going to be a new way of doing things here.
And when do we do that, like, cause this is something we've been wanting for.
Well, and, and I believe after you go through your search process, they're going to work with you on goals or with the superintendent and all that, so all of that will happen. As I'm still working with the board, I'm gonna come at it from another angle with you, so you're gonna get it from the, with, with superintendent and as a board. Um, that's when it starts, when you begin July one, when your new superintendent starts. And it's a, it's a grind, you're gonna continue doing that, because it needs to be clear, it's unfair for a superintendent to come and start. And again, remember, superintendents are credentialized, they know how to be a superintendent, so they're gonna come in doing the work. What's usually missing is what does this board expect, and you don't want three or six months to get, go away. Before the superintendent knows that this is what the board was going, is going to evaluate me on. They wanted me to really drill down in this area, but they never told me that.
But I'm saying, should we start now?
You should start preparing for it, absolutely, this is, yes, you're in that space, that's why I say, you guys are in a really sensitive space. But there's a lot that you have already revealed of stuff you should be focusing on, but that is high top priority, and I really do believe that, I believe the search firm is really gonna work. Specifically in that space, go ahead.
This is for you, kind, one, one is, um, yeah, typically in a, in a superintendent's contract, the, the evaluation process is outlined.
Oh.
And then, then, a- and, and part of the process includes agreeing upon goals, what's gonna be evaluated on by. It's typically like October, right, and then, then with where you are, you ideally, and you may be for your first year, you wanna adjust it, cause ideally. I mean, I, interested in your thoughts on this, but ideally, the superintendent's coming in, and, you know, they'll often do like, you know, a hundred-day plan. But you might just wanna say, have your introduction to the district be get, developing a strategic plan, gearing for the community about a strategic plan. So you don't need to wait, wait so long, and, um, and so then, I, you know, and I can share some of the, you know, templates also. So you have some things to look at, so when you start that conversation with the superintendent, they're coming in, they'll probably say, well, you know, if they have had experience, they'll say. Uh, or even if they're a cabinet member, you know, here's how I've been evaluated, and you can look at that, uh, then the last thing is, we do actually have a third workshop that is scheduled. And, I don't think we finalized.
We have a May and we have a September.
Right, and now, I guess, I think you're gonna help really with the goals.
In May, that's what I'm gonna do.
Yeah, and in September, because by, by, once the superintendent is selected, the search firm's not continuing. So they're helping like to, you know, think about the approach, but.
Mm-hmm, that's when I will.
You'll help with that, you'll help with that.
And I, I like that you said some superintendent may say, remember you guys have all these pieces of a strategic plan, but also do know that the strategic plan. It's a good nine months to a year to give birth to that baby, little baby. But because you have some of the pieces already there, you can have an abbreviated one, that you can say to the new superintendent. Give us your idea about the first, um, ninety days of what are the top areas. Not just leaving it open, but what are the top areas for this board, because there are some areas where you feel there, some triage need to happen. And you guys need to make sure they know that, yes, everything is top priority, but we need to prioritize the priority. And if there's any specific area that this board feels strongly about, make that known. Because the expectation is, within ninety days, I need to see the plan, and then I need to start seeing some evidence. And, cause what if, whatever the plan is, the expectation that the board has, that the superintendent, and I'm not saying that, this is true, but it can happen. Looks at staffing, it's like, do I have the capacity here? Here, to get where the board is telling me, that's something the superintendent has to figure out, but that's the reality of any new superintendent coming in. I've gotta look at my staff, yes, we value staff, and it's not anything about that, re- and I'm not gonna say, but the, the reality is. You have to have the right people on the team to move this district, that's what the superintendent, you guys say what your expectations are. And the superintendent is figuring out, do I have the staff who can get us there, and they're gonna have to make that decision like, hmm, maybe not, maybe I need to move some people. I know you have unions and all that, still would do, the board's expectation is not gonna be lowered. Figure it out, superintendent, that's what, pretty much the board, figure it out, because we know we have been missing the mark for years. And when you're missing the mark, you think about all the children that are falling through the cracks, so there is a sense of urgency.
And support them.
And support them, absolutely.
And I'm gonna, I know I've said this a million times, but it is so important, because it's not fair for someone to say, change the whole system, we wanna eradicate. Structural racism, but, but you, but we're not gonna support you to do anything different, or when the, when the grease gets hot. And we're, we back up.
Back up and leave them there.
The teachers union, or well, the administrators are saying, right? It's like, no, we can do things in a very humane way. Coach people where they need to be.
Yes, yep.
And then make sure that that superintendent has the, the support from us and to do their job well.
Absolutely.
Cause otherwise, it really is not there, and it's a setup for failure.
It's a setup for failure, absolutely. Yes, that, that is so important. And then you, you make sure that people have buy-in, and it's not about. Again, we're looking at what's best for kids, overall collectively. How can we get this district? It's not about, well, you can, I want you to jump on board. What tools do you need? Because we've set the bar here. You need some assistance, we're gonna, that's equity. We're gonna give you staff what you need. Cause the expectation is that we're gonna be here. In order to be here, we need you to have some different tools. We need you to operate and move a little bit different, so practices and behaviors must stop. But you have those conversations in the most, i- i- in, in the most humane way. Um, and saying that people are valued, you also have every right to say. Let people self, um, reflect or say, well, maybe I, I can't do that. That doesn't align with me, that's okay. Then you decide where your future's going to be. Because at the end of the day, we are, our responsibility is to educate all children. We want you on this bus. We want you on this journey with us. If you say, I'm not doing that, then obviously you're saying you're not, you don't wanna be a part of the team. So what are we gonna do with you? Those are tough conversations. Another red one, the board ensures that district educational goals are established. So again, you're already saying this. Are established and communicated to all. So when you get to the point where you have those, um, uh, goals, everyone knows. Cause it's not just, oh, the board wants, no, it's the district. This is who we are, and everybody needs to move in this space this way. It shouldn't, if I went to your three different high schools, I shouldn't feel that I'm walking into three different districts. There, and same with elementary, they shouldn't feel, no one should feel that way. Does the board, uh, provide the mechanism to continually revise, update instructional programs? Not effective, how do you revise instructional programs when you don't choose? But how do you do, but how does the board still do that? What do you think? How do you do it? The big evaluate, you evaluate everything. That's basically what it is. That's how you find out you revised it or updated, or you may say, um, this ain't working based upon the results? So go back to the drawing board. Y'all the experts in here, bring us something that's gonna get us here. Or sometimes we have to pivot. The program that we have doesn't work, but perhaps staff doesn't realize that it's okay to pivot. Showing that support.
I think the important part of the governance calendar and having that continuous update is, sometimes it's, um. That the program doesn't work, but most of the time it's the implementation.
Implementation, yes.
I learned that from another field. Like, sometimes it's just because we're not all doing it the way, we're not doing it with fidelity, we're not getting the results we need to get, right?
Yeah.
And then how does the board support? We make sure that there's funding for, you know, like the implementation support. And the training for, for the staff, like.
Like what do you need to be successful? Because we've invested in this, so what do you need to be successful? And allow them to be able to say, it is the implementation. We thought we could just do this, but because of, of the capacity of staff, we're not able to get there unless. We get this another person, or unless we invest in this individual to be able to get more trained. Whatever it is, the board is just asking, what do you need? Cause we need to get here.
Yeah, I think, um, an important piece of this though is to remember the flip side, is we shouldn't just be reevaluating or updating or revising. They're looking at things when there's something didn't go quite right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, which is the, the topic that I wanted to review, the alternative to suspension. One of the reasons why I wanna review it is because in the city school committee, we're talking a lot about climate. And that it's showing like it's a bright spot. So I wanna understand, what are we doing? What are we doing right? And what is our program?
Absolutely.
So, because it's like, I think that's the biggest mistake that people get. When you do something well, you don't really understand why it's.
Right, and you can't replicate it. You, it's like a fluke, oh, we must do, then the next year it plummets.
Yeah.
Cause you didn't understand, absolutely. But that's, and they have in dialogue, and, and talking with the staff. Let them tell you, where do you see some challenges might be? Again, tell us, because again, we're listening to you, and the only way we can support you is if you tell us. This is the reality of being in the classroom doing X, Y, Z. We wanna get there, but we're missing a piece. But that's that dialogue, and that's through the superintendent, where the superintendent is asked, the board is saying what the concerns are. Superintendent is engaging with staff to say, okay, be able to come to the board and give a presentation that's gonna answer all of those questions for the board. That's what it looks like, okay? Keep abreast of new developments in curricula, um, and teaching strategies through participating in one of the conferences. Um, weak and satisfactory in there. But this is how you, of course, you don't select. The, the curricula, but you, you do hear things. And so it's just a matter of, hey, hey, dump. Hey, we get a, uh, dump. Cause the superintendent maybe never say, you know what, we do something like that, but it's called this. But the board wouldn't know that. So again, it's dialogue, it's dialogue. It's data savvy. Now, I said the two people, you have two people who are considered, uh, data experts on the board, three and a, two and a half. Uh, embracing and monitoring qualitative and qual- quantitative and qualitative, even if the information is negative. Um, so not a weak and satisfactory. And this is where you just have to remember in being clear to staff. When they have to report out some bad news, it's okay. It's, it's, oh, if we have to see the red, some, some districts have actually changed the color. We're not using red, yellow, and green. We can use whatever it takes to soften the blow, but still just have some rationale, like, we understand, we have some challenges, da, da, da. This is the plan to address it. That's what you are, the board will always wanna know. If it's bad news, tell us what your plan. That means that you've given it some thought. And then you just set in, set out metrics to say, how are we going to continue to monitor this? And when you expect the staff to say, we don't wanna wait till long, where it's so far gone, we can't recover. You know, that, that's even when you have students who are, don't have enough credits to graduate. You don't wanna wait till May to find out? But what's the process before, how do they know before? And then you got, you have angry parents coming that their child is not gonna walk. That's not, this whole room will be filled up, right? You don't want that to happen. Uh, so again, toward the end, the board community relation, the board acts as part of the board rather than individual. So you have weak and good, so you're split on that. Um, so again, the board, you guys know, you know that the, the board wants to gamble and shit, you are no longer, you have power, no power. One board member cannot speak for the board. That's why it's important when somebody wants something at the board table, others say yes, cause it is the will of the board. And this could have been some past practice that, like, satisfied, we could do better. Refrain from committing to a position, now this is satisfactory and good. Uh, it seems like you, you're pretty good at not doing that, or making any promises to people, like, where are we gonna do that? And the board has not made that decision. Um, strives to maintain an open dialogue with this local and state government, so that's. Um, says a weak and impro- should improve, and then good. So what's your relationship? Do you have relationships with like city council and other? Entities, um.
We have a city school committee.
City school committee.
I think we're, well, it, it, I mean, it's just starting.
Yeah, and that's okay. And again, this is where you could consider, who are the groups that we don't engage with? You have to kinda put your head together. Who are those marginally that we don't ask? They never come to our meeting, we don't know. Okay, go ahead, Jay.
When I think about local and state governmental leaders, I know that, um, as a city schools committee, that, that's one thing we're working to. Heal the, the kind of past relationships that were had, and I think we're doing a good job.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know that individually, only because Antonio and I have been on the board and we interacted with other, uh, state and local government leaders. I think individually, some of us have relationships, but when I answer that question, I thought about collectively.
Collective, yeah.
And then what do we do collectively to help change something, right? So not so related to our school, related to our community, so, and I'm not sure, so anyway, that's what I thought of when I answered the question. Not just individually, but collectively.
Collectively, yeah. And do you guys show up at city council when they talk about education? If you want to be the voice, not someone else being the voice of, and, and you think about all these other entities that in, that touch children. You have the judicial system, you have transportation, you know, you have housing. Do you have relationships, you, you know, with, um, the real estate? See, uh, what do you call, not city council, um, chamber of Congress. What's the message that people are saying? Don't go to any, or are they saying, go? It ma- it, it, it matters to show up sometime at those other meetings, just so you can hear what's, you wanna be the voice of talking about what's going on in this district, not someone else. Collaboratively, re- re- uh, relationships with superintendent, staff, as well as the community through a strong communication structure. To inform and engage both internal and external. So you said it's weak to satisfactor, so. That's something you just have to build upon. The communications, um, internally, maybe there, whatever the flow is, and you'll work through that with your new superintendent. But the board has to be clear of what your expectations are on communicating. On the board, how do you engage the community? You know, do you expect your superintendent to be out there in the community? Um, and not just with, you know, with kids. What about those adults? Cause if we cannot forget about the adults, because we need them to be their best selves when they're in front of kids. So we want, how do we support them? And so if you build great relationships before it's time for a, of, uh, contract negotiation. At least they will understand, they, I, I kinda like the board, they cool. I know they gotta do the, what they have to do, but we have to do what we have to do too. So you at least will have some type of respect for the roles at each play. Because you have been working on it all year long. You don't just wait till it's negotiation and think everybody's gonna come and sing kumbaya. Cause that's not gonna happen, right? Team building, the board meetings are productive, um, by regularly addressing all the agenda items. So you're feeling you're pretty good, satisfactory, good. Thank you, Antonio. Cause they're gonna hold you accountable, whoever sits in that seat, so that's a yes. Foster's team, um, work, again, satisfactory, um, to, um, good, so that, that's good, different of opinion, you're all different, different lived experiences. But it's how we engage with each other, and remembering our communication preferences. Okay, this one, I always have to start with, I don't understand this with every board, it just happens. I always say confidentiality in any language means the same thing. I don't understand this. I don't, I don't. Please help me, enlighten me, I don't.
Personally, I just feel there's leaks.
And that's, that's the part, I don't, that's not, that's, number one, it's against the law. You, if you're not, are you afraid? I mean, but you can, that's against the law, you can go to jail for that. And number two, which I even think is something you should really think about, is there are only certain things that you can talk about in closed session. You're talking about someone's livelihood, or you're talking about students. Why would you want that to get leaked out? Before it eventually will, but you don't want it coming from the board. So this should, and this, I have never had a board say that we're good. So I just wanted you to see. This is a area, there is just no excuse. I, I have to just be that clear with, there is no excuse, that there is any chatter about closed session. None. There's nothing anyone could tell me that it's okay. Yes, it will eventually get out, absolutely, but it's, there were situations, I've had boards where they had to, before they go into closed sessions. They had to leave their phones. Cause no one could be trusted, cause some people were live streaming, or, oh, yeah. That's why we have this, that's why, yeah. Yeah, live streaming or, or recording it, that somebody, yeah, FaceTime until somebody, yes. So they had to put in a rule that you can't, which is just, it's, it's crazy. But things like these happen, you know, with boards that I work with all over the country, it does happen.
But can I, can I go back to that?
Sure.
This is something that, uh, is important, and what I'm learning is that it might not actually be coming from the board all the time.
Thank you, yeah. Depends on who's in closed session. That's why, the board decides who's in closed session. So this is where you have to really make sure you know who's in closed session. Because if it's about staff people and the staff person who may leak, is it, well, it's usually the board. And the superintendent and or the attorney. So this is where you cut, talk to your legal counsel to say, okay, can we not have these certain people? Cause that is exactly where it leaks to, I do know that for sure. You're right. That, you just have to deal with the reality of it, because you wanna get to a point where it doesn't get leaked on. If board members like, I did not say anything. Then you start looking at other people, and then you have to move differently, maybe exclude some people if the. The attorney, your legal counsel tell you that, yeah, I think you should, but it is against the law. And if you're not gonna do anything about it, then people are gonna continue to do it. So this is where you use your authority. Okay? Reviews annually its role, evaluates and, and, uh, and evaluates its performance. That's what you're doing now, but you have not effective, weak, and, um, one, good. So you want to do this, you wanna evaluate the board. Again, it's not required, but it's good when the board, the community sees that you care enough. About sharpening your own tools to, um, be held accountable for what you're doing, your decision-making. Next thing. So.
And Deborah, was that considered an evaluation?
Yes, it is. So you've done it. And then that's why I automatically do it, uh, another year, to see where you are. So this is what we're gonna do. When is the next time you're together? When are you gonna see them?
They have regular.
Oh, no, that's too long. Okay, that's too far. This is what, the two documents, this is what I normally do, those two documents that are in your folder. One of them, uh, remember I said I did the work for you and I put some norms together? All I need you to do is circle the ones that you like. But I need you to get that documents front and back. I need you to get that document to mine, so that she can scan them and send them to me. And when next time you see me, I will come with a really, really good copy of what you're saying your board norms are, okay? Now, the, the colorful one, I need you to write legibly. Or if you wanna just type it, you can, type it and send it to me. Don't send it to the group, cause I don't wanna violate it today, directly to me. Of what your expectations are, of like board member to board member. For us to, to work collectively and collaboratively as a board, what do I need from my colleagues? And it could be, I need you to read your packet. I need you to, to speak this way, that doesn't make me feel a certain way. It could be things like that. Whatever you feel, I'm just giving you some examples. I need you to show up at the meetings on time. Whatever you expect of each other, I want you to jot, put at least three bullet points of what you expect. Put what you expect of, of a board president, not of Antonio. What do you expect of anyone sitting in that seat? Okay? I also want you to put, there's really, out of those, you only do three, cause you're not the superintendent. I would want you to put, what do you expect of a superintendent? And that could be, be sharing all information with all board members. Setting up one-on-ones with every board member once a month, whatever it is. Cause all of this is gonna help the, help you say, this is what we need to be effective, okay? So again, you can either, it might be easier just to take those headings and email me what your thoughts are. I'll give you, is it fair to give you a week? Cause what I like to do is give you a summary of what we did. I don't like it to go over a week, cause then I might forget some of the stuff. So if you can get it to me in a week, which is, was today, well, today's Wednesday. So I would say by next Friday, I'll give it to you next Friday, email me. What those, um, your expectations are, and then somehow, um. Yeah, but how are you gonna get, did you guys see? I was gonna say, or you can take a picture, cause all I'm asking you on the norm, circle the ones. And if you feel that one should be written under that heading, feel free. Just make it legible. So that's one way to do it. Snap shot, picture, send them to Deborah, okay? So that's your homework, okay? So, is the May fourteenth confirmed? Cause we had a twen- a twenty eighth and a May fourteenth, yes?
So we're gonna move the seven, the regular meeting on the seventh to fourteenth, cause then we don't, we don't need to pay for her travel.
Okay, so it's our board meeting that's gonna be on the seventh, is that correct?
No, we're just gonna, basically like, we're gonna have one board meeting in May, and also the nineteenth, and the other one will be this workshop.
Okay, so we don't have anything on the seventh?
We wouldn't have anything on the seventh.
I have another meeting on the seventh, so that's.
And then at the next board meeting, we just need to change that, because it was a part of the official, we'll, we'll need to have that as agenda. Cause whenever you change an official, what's that?
May fourteenth is important.
Now we're moving, May fourteenth is gonna be a board, this, the follow-up workshop.
Oh, what time?
Forty. Forty.
Same, I think it's same time, yeah.
And when, when we be on board meeting, none at all?
We'll do, then we have a board meeting May twenty first. Cause we had two that month. We had two that month, but we don't, we didn't, uh, we don't need to have three to also have another board workshop, so we can just have the, the two, one of them will be a board workshop. Governance workshop, one will be a regular meeting.
So then you have to officially close out the meeting afterwards.
And then, um, I'll just, uh, uh, yeah, maybe before officially closing, I'll appreciate.
True, just your final comment.
And appreciate, um, the board for, you know, participating this, but really, uh, I guess maybe you didn't know what you were signing up for, but Deborah shared, you know, it's a, it's a lot of work to become an effective governance team, but appreciate you all making that commitment for this district. And to add on to the work, you have the homework by Friday, Maya's already ordered you, um, the gu- core governance two point O book. Uh, so you'll have that, so after you finish that homework, uh, you know, uh, maybe Deborah can assign us some chapters and.
You'll wait till September for that one, because that, yeah, but get the book now, start looking at, maybe I'll do a little bit, but I'll let you know ahead of time if I'm gonna talk to the, talk about the first two chapters or something, yeah, I'll weave it into it, yeah.
Have a really productive conversation.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, and I hope this encourages us to like be open about these things, I think we've all kinda shared that we're really receptive about hearing these things, and that, um, you know, these things, um, may seem just like organizational things, but hopefully it becomes clear and clear that like, this is what it means to actually support our students here, to get us to a point where we can have really effective conversations about our students. Um, and so I'm really excited about, uh, the work that we're doing with all this, and so.
I appreciate you guys, yeah.
I don't mean to be self-serving, but since Maya is like manipulating the schedule now, I just found out that I'm gonna be in China, um, from the eleventh to the twentieth, which are exactly both board meetings in June, I don't mind just missing them all together, as long as you guys have a come, but I would, it would be nice if you could change the date. It's probably just the eleventh, I could come in for my flight and attend the meeting.
Is there a June date?
Yeah.
Maybe we can take a look at the schedule and, and.
And you, and, and you don't have to accommodate, I'm completely happy with you guys just running board business as is too, but I just wanted to throw it out there, and since Maya is like manipulating the schedule already, I was like, we better say something.
And we should like, I mean, the eleventh is an important one, because that's where we present the budget, it's a public hearing for the budget and the L cap. So even if you aren't there for the vote on it, this is your opportunity to ask questions, provide feedback.
I, I have to go. I mean, my daughter, this.
Yeah, no, no, so.
Yeah, I'm not changing my flights.
Yeah, we need to, you know, maybe.
Maybe before people start to act yet, we are still technically in an official meeting, so we do have to adjourn, so I did need a motion to adjourn. Great, so there's motion, and a second, all in favor, say aye, all opposed, say no, and motion passed.
Thank you for keeping us.
All right, thank you.